I'd like to call to order the City of Danone CRA meeting. This is May 9, 2022. It is now 5:05 PM. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before you are seated, is there anyone who would like to say some words of guidance or prayer? That's what it is? Why not?
Oh, I'm going to take off my counseling hat. I'm a resident and a member of the citizen. I'm going right here today. How about that? Father God, we come to you in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, thanking you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us. We pray, God, for your guidance in this meeting, that you will have your way, that your will will be done, for your will is the only great and perfect will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please, everybody, have a seat. Ms. Odom, we're ready for roll call.
Mayor White?
President.
Ms. Mary Hinchard, President. Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny?
Here.
Councilwoman Covage?
Present.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer?
Here.
Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager?
Here.
Joyce Larry, Color Works Manager?
Here.
Julie Donowski, Restaurant Director?
Here.
Lieutenant Yox, Police Department? Is absent. Chief McQuaid is absent. Andrew Hand, City Attorney?
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the City's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Monday, May 2, 2022, and amended on May 3 to add Item Number 1, and again on May 5 to add Agenda Item Number 4.
All right, we move on to the agenda as it is posted. I see consent agenda, but I'm unsure what's included in the consent agenda.
Oh, my consent agenda is just the minutes.
Just the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I see no public comment or anything like that. Consent agenda?
I would consider it approved as presented.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item Number 1, passes. Now we move to Number 2. Application for CRA Historic Preservation Facade Rehabilitation Reimbursement Grant, HPB 2022-04, the Women's Club of Danone, 11756 Cedar Street. Ms. Odom, who leads us on that?
This is Georgina.
Hello, Georgina, hi.
Hi, Council. Thank you. Well, the Women's Club of Danone is requesting a facade improvement grant for $5,000 to remove rotten trees and rotten wood around the porch area, trim trees, and do new landscaping, as well as replace window and repair the driveway. This has come in front of the Historic Board, and they recommended your approval.
Okay. Council, do we have any, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait a second.
One second.
Okay, discussion. Ms. Mayor?
Yes, do they, when are they going to start the work?
As soon as we give them the okay to, well, they have to, they have to, the contractors, to do the permitting process. As soon as that is approved and everything is set, then they can start the work.
And then we pay, and then we pay them back the $5,000.
Yes, we reimburse once they submit the invoices.
Okay.
Just to freshen my memory, the application for the $5,000, a couple things, you have to be in the CRA district, correct?
In the Historic Board District.
Hmm?
In the Historic Board District.
Historic Board, okay. That's clarification.
For this year only, though.
For this year only, yes.
And is the $5,000 applicable to work that is done on the outside of the building or just inside or anything?
It's relating to the facade of the property.
To the facade, okay. So that's what you can see from the road?
Right.
Okay. I was just interested, we knew we had $100,000, 20 of them at $5,000 a pop. How many have been applied for thus far?
So far, we have four.
Is there any reason in your mind, when we're willing to reimburse people that are eligible for this, why out of $100,000, we've only had $20,000 applied for it? It's frustrating.
We have three more applications coming, but they haven't been presented to the Historic Board yet. It's going to be a total of seven, but, I mean, they're coming.
Yeah, these are the sort of things that, as a government official, that I scratch my head, you often hear comments, you know, that the city should be doing more, government can be doing more, the police could be doing more, whatever. Here is simply a program that's in place to do something.
Mm-hmm.
And we're having a hard time getting people to take advantage of it. It's interesting how these comments, when it comes down to what reality is, you know, sometimes those that are complaining aren't taking advantage of what's there. Okay, thank you.
And we've still, and we've always had it out on our website. It's out on our website, correct? It's on the newspaper. I mean, I know personally, I've knocked on some doors and let some businesses know that are in the historic that they're going, you know, that they can do this. So I mean, short of-
And I also know that the volunteer committee has been out there promoting it as well.
And it's, yes. Short of neon signs and going, yo, free money here.
Oh, last question, I just thought. If, for instance, we did not use that money this year, what would happen with the balance?
It rolls over to the next year.
And then we go, and we go back into the just general CRA pot or will it go into an extension of this program?
It will go into the CRA fund.
It just goes through on balance, the reserve.
Okay, and then we decide what to do the following year.
Yes, now Georgina decides the budget for grants again, as she earmarks them out, and more grants are-
Okay. Any additional comments, Council?
Yeah, I have one comment, related to what you said, Mayor White, and that is, I think the city has done a great job of getting the information out. The problem is, and I've walked around too, and I've talked to people, problem is, a lot of these are shop managers that we're talking to, and they do not own the facility. So I asked them, well, can you pass the information on? And it's like, that's where, that's where it ends. Okay, so if we had some, if we could figure out a way to get to the actual owners of the buildings, I think we could have people maybe jump up and sign.
Many of the businesses are leased.
They are leased, correct.
Interesting.
But they can also, even if they're leased, can't they come to us and ask us for grants if they're going to be doing the work?
Yes, they can.
That's what I thought. So it doesn't have to be an owner of the building. Hey, well, a tenant.
As long as they provide proof that they are, you know, the landlord is okay with them getting the grant, they can do that.
So to Ms. Covage's point, when we are sending out our notices of this program, is it being sent to the business owner or the property owner?
The information has been sent to the entire community within the Historic District.
In other words, if I'm, if I live in Tampa and I own one of the commercial buildings that I'm renting out, do I get a notice in the, a notice somehow that my building is eligible for this program?
We're not sending individual notices. We're putting the news out there through the different means, like the website, the newspaper, you know, but we're not, we're not giving individual notices to anybody. If Council instructs us to do that, then we can do that, but that's not, that's not what we've been doing.
These questions are based on us having a little difficulty getting this off the ground and what we might do to try to get people more aware, possibly, I think. Ms. Covage, is a good point. If those that are local that are running the business are aware of it, but if the businesses, property themselves are owned by people out of town, it would follow that they may not be up to speed as much as someone who lives here. So, just an idea. Any other discussion?
We have, can we have, we have their addresses because we send them their tax notice. Maybe we can send the bulletin along with their tax notices.
Ms. Kenny, do you have a comment? Okay, I think we have.
Well, Mr. Mayor asked my question. How many applications do we currently have? And what was on my mind, I was just wondering, have you had anyone that feels like they just can't afford to pay upfront?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the, I guess, setbacks that they, some people have, that they don't have the money upfront to pay for it.
Okay. And we've talked about that numerous times, and I've, I've come up with different ideas, and financially, the city, we can't, there's some liability in that.
Yeah.
I think the attorney has also commented that there is liability in that, because otherwise, that was always one of my things.
Yeah.
Okay.
C'est la vie.
Everyone has had an opportunity to comment, and we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor on Number 2?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We move now to Number 3. Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Annual Audit Presentation. Richard Powell, Powell &amp; Jones CPA, welcome back to the building. Welcome. That's impossible. Nearly a year has gone by.
Yes. The, the city has had the CRA for many years. It has always been accounted for and is still today as a special revenue fund. It's included in the citywide audit. About two years ago, the legislature passed a law that said in any year, if the CRA has in excess of $100,000 in either revenues or expenditures, it has to have a standalone audit. And so you have qualified for that. And so this is standalone audit. And the 26 pages is a duplication of what's in the, in the city audit, which we'll discuss at the next meeting, but I'll give you a brief overview. First of all, the CRA fund, as shown on Pages 1 and 2, has basically an unmodified, clean audit opinion. On Page 10 is the balance sheet that says that the cash assets at the end of the fiscal year were 672, 439, liabilities 61, 730. So the fund balance, cash reserves, 610,709. So you have substantial equity in the CRA. Shown on Page 11, in this year, the main revenues are the taxes contributed by the county and the city. And then you earn a little interest. So the revenues were 299,265. And this year, you spent 596, 578, which reduced the fund balance from 908,022 to 610,709. So you, and I'm sure you have a spending plan, and you're reducing that fund balance. Other than that, the rest of the audit pages just basically have required disclosures. I will say on Page 24 is our report regarding audit procedures required by government auditing standards. In that report, there are no findings, question costs. Page 26, 27 is the management letter. Here, as to the CRA, there were no reportable findings in the prior year, no reportable findings in the current year. Page 28 says that the CRA funds were invested in compliance with Florida statutes. So that's a brief overview of the CRA fund. So if there's any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Yes, my question is, you used the word findings a few times. Yes, sir. Describe what, when you say we found no findings.
A finding would be something that occurred that would not be in compliance with the law or a policy or a procedure or, or something like that.
It would be a red flag.
It'd be a red flag. That's a good way to say, yes, sir.
I don't know if this is a question for you or for Ms. Smith. Question that sort of comes out all the time is, what can the city anticipate? And I know Ms. Smith hates ruminating on that. But it appears that the city can anticipate, see our funds, new funds, somewhere between 275,000 to 300,000 per year. Would that be an accurate statement?
It would be, as long as property values have decreased. It's an accurate statement.
All right, so, so we, in other words, if the world stays stable?
Yes.
We're going to get 275,000 to 300,000 in our CRA. Okay. And it's carried over what we don't spend in states anymore.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? This man drove all the way from St. Louis for this meeting.
From Lake City, almost was far. Except it was mainly interstate, it wasn't that bad.
If there's no questions, thank you very much. Great, yes, sir. All right, thank you, Council. We're moving now to Agenda Item Number 4. Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Second Quarter, TIF, the CRA Budget Update. Is that you, Ms. Smith?
That is me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, these figures are as of March, so they don't reflect the audit figures that have just been presented, but pretty close. As you can see, we are, if you look at year-to-date actuals, for this current year, revenues are $328,081. Expenses, approximately $25,000. The main column to look at is the projection for the remainder of the year. I'm still projecting pretty much close to budget. The difference between this figure, the 600,515 versus what we budgeted, is the 125 part. I did take that out since the CRA funds that were pledged for that are earmarked for Blue Rock Park Restroom now. I went ahead and reduced the revenue by about $24,000. And you can see our, our tax revenue is pretty much, has come in right on budget, miscellaneous gives, interest income, and then the old one. And I have labeled the transfer from reserves as old, which was one of the requests from my last presentation. It's coming from reserve. We're looking to use $272,000 from existing reserves. So that brings the total revenue side of the budget to 600,515. The expenses, we have, for personnel, I'm projecting $45,962. General operating expenses, $58,000. For capital expenses, $395,000. And grants, I've left this at the full projection of $100,000 in hopes that we will, other people will apply for grants. But again, this is only a miniage for a total expense budget of 600,444. So at the end of the year, we're looking at a surplus amount of about $71.
Seventy-one?
It's pretty tight.
Like seven-one?
And again, that's if, if the budget is really spent the way it's presented. And it's, it's hard, you know, at March, you know, what are we going to spend, what are we not going to spend? So at March, I'm very conservative, and I try and keep it right on our budget unless something is known, such as the 125 part. That's, that's a known quantity, that we're not going to be doing that budget, at least out of the CRA. So that's why I did reduce that transfer from reserve. And other than that, there are no other real remarks I have for the CRA fund at this time.
Any questions, Council? I have one. The money that comes towards CRA from the property taxes, at what point during the year is that money usable, spendable?
It must be deposited into the TIF fund no later than December 31. Whether we have received the money or not, we have to transfer money into that fund. And part of the tax revenue comes directly from the city and taxes that we collect in that current year, and the other part comes from merit account.
So we have, we have a hard date when we know what the total money will be?
Yes, sir.
It's not just trickling in the nickels and dimes throughout the year?
No, like general fund.
Okay. I got you. All right, thank you. Any additional comments or questions, Council? Very good, thank you, Ms. Smith.
And the next schedule is the reserve schedule, where we've got, if you look at this column right here?
Balance?
It is on balance. We're right at about 609,000 as of the end of March in unrestricted funds, meaning this is what is funding the current budget. This is like the checking account. Then there's a restricted reserve for the bike path. And according to my notes, it was decided in December to hold off funding this reserve anymore this current year. It can still be done, but we're sitting at 303,760 for the bike path. We have to meet the obligation of 350,000 by next year. So I can either fund a portion of it, I believe I've re-budgeted maybe about $14,000 to go into the reserve. We can still do that, or we can budget $42,000 to come to definitely fully fund this reserve next year. Either way, the money is in. So for a total, including the restricted reserve, of 913,41. And then the last schedule, unless there are any questions?
Questions, comments? We continue the room? Nope, continue.
The last schedule is the color-coded one, and I'm not sure my color, colors are really showing up. But based on the last presentation and it being hard to read, I eliminated prior year's projects, which don't really play into this conversation. What I'm showing here is one year, last year, and the projects that were funded, and then the current year and where we're projected. And this matches the very first schedule that I showed you a few minutes ago, where I'm projecting personnel expenses, operating expenses, the grants. Then we break out the individual projects in a little more detail. The Blue Rock Park Restrooms, $35,400. That is made up of the $12,000 that is still available from the original restaurant period, plus the $23,400 that was earmarked for the 125 project. So I've combined the two to project spending $35,400. Then we go down to the West Ten Streetscape Phase 2 project. There is still $50,000 available. Ernie Mills Beautification, $10,000. Wayfinding signage was estimated at 226, so I've left that. And then parking enhancements, $73,000. And then the only funds that are restricted, if you scroll down just a little bit more, the 303,760. So we were going to deposit a little bit more into that. So I've left that in case Council decides, even tonight, if you want me to fund it a little more, or we just wait until next year to fully fund the balance of the Bike Path project. And that concludes my presentation.
Council, any questions? Thank you. Very good. All right, now we concluded that part of the CRA meeting. We are now at number five, public comments. I would like to get clarification from either Mr. Hand or Mandy. Public comments that are on this agenda, are they germane to this topic or are they open to anything the public might want to talk? Keep in mind that we open the next meeting, the public comments, the regarding CRA. CRA. Understood. Okay, we're at number five. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment based on the meeting we just had, the CRA meeting? We will, when we open up our regular meeting, after we do the Pledge of Allegiance and whatever, we will open the meeting with regular public comments. And those that want to speak can speak to different topics at that time. Ms. Dunn, you want to speak, please? This is only on the CRA.
Kathy Dunn, 1138 600 Drive. I just wanted to tell my experience about trying to get some of the CRA grants interest built up is in working with a path on West Pennsylvania, helping her, and then you go in her backyard and Penn Station, the Cuban restaurant, is in very bad disrepair. The fence is falling over on the path's parking area. And so I go in there and ask them if they would be interested in the grant. No, he says, I'm the, I lease the building from the owner, and he is not interested. So, yes, Jan Covage, her comment was very appropriate. A renter is not really going to be able to apply for a grant. So I think it would be very appropriate, since I think most people would agree that we have a ton of luck in our town for the City Council to request our community planner to go and let's knock on some doors and see if we can help these people to alert them about the money that is available. I mean, if we want to clean up the town, this might be one way to do it. And so I would be happy to help in any way that I can as a member of the planning council. But if we could use our staff to get the word out and actually knock on doors of these buildings and say, hey, like the Masonic Lodge, hey, can we get you a new screen door? Can we paint the building? Whatever. So I would think it would be very appropriate for our CRA board, Lash City Council, to direct our staff to start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Can I just ask one? You said tenants can apply, but the owner?
But it has to approve.
The owner has to approve.
Sure, okay, just making sure. I just want to make sure.
I think where these questions are going is it, I think it would behoove the city to consider, because we do have the addresses, to somehow, whether it's email or whatever, to make an att- to make an attempt to make sure that the property owners themselves are notified of this somehow, somewhere.
I'll do whatever you instruct our department to do as far as possibly.
How tough would that be to do? Do we, we send out texts?
We can send letters out, but I don't think I have the manpower to go door by door and knock on doors.
No, I think that would be the best.
I have to run the department and have one assistant to help.
I mean, would it be incredibly cumbersome to send out a notice to the property owner?
I can certainly do that, yes, sir.
Council, do you want to give a? Okay, I think we, considering how this is going, I think that would cover your, and I think that's a good suggestion.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
All right, any other pop? Okay, Mr. Bevver, this is focused on the CRA discussion. Name and address, sir.
Bill Bevver, 9552 Southwest 192nd Court Road. Just wanted to bring to Council's attention, I think you know this already, but we're talking about, we run park projects. It's a restroom now, but it could be something else in the future. But just for your information is that since 2008, the Blue Run Park restroom has been in the management plan. And we have talked about this many times. We did two FORD Act grants unsuccessful for the restroom. We also did a recreational trails back grant, it's a pile of people like this, unsuccessful. So we've been working on this for a long time. Also, the CRA management plan was revised probably five years ago specifically to include Blue Run Park projects. That was done by Councilman Dylan, to make sure that the Blue Run Park projects, if there was any CRA money to be used, it would be included in the plan. So, and Blue Run Park, as you know, is also in the CRA district. So the project has been very well documented for a very long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Would anyone else? Yes, Mr. Kiefer, please. We know who you are, but you still have to give us your name and address.
How do you do that, sir? My name's Scott Kiefer. I'm at 9075 North Cedar Cove Road, Dunellen, Citrus County Side. I am on the Historic Preservation, I'm the Chair of Historic Preservation. And regards to the CRA funds, we are making an attempt to get these funds out. I'm also on the Greater Dunellen Historical Society. We get people coming in there, we're also directing them over here for these. And in our next meeting, I'll be going over some of it. We have given away some grant money. So the word is getting out that we are doing it and that it is available. Some of the things we're running into, though, is people are either not wanting to get the estimates or it seems that everybody's just applying for the maximum amount. And we're having to back some of those down. And I think some of the direction that City Council may need to consider on this is what we're going to fund. We had somebody come in front of us that wanted to replace every window in their house. Me personally, I don't see how that helps the city with CRA funds to beautify the property. I can see doing a front door and the front windows, but I don't think the city, me personally, speaking on behalf of the city when I say this, is interested in replacing somebody's entire windows around their entire house. Although it may need it, our funds are hope to help beautify the community and bring the homes up to standard. So just something to keep in mind on that when we go forward with these CRA funds is what they're actually going for. I understand a lot of it's beautification, landscape, that sort of stuff. But at what point do you draw the line? You know, when somebody needs the money to actually fix a problem with their house with the roof or the deck or, you know, something like that being an issue, and then we run out of funds because we paid five thousand dollars to put in landscaping and grass and cut down some, trim up some trees and somebody shot it. So again, we are working on it, we've got some funds going out, and I know there's a couple more on this tomorrow's meeting as well.
George, you have to ask a follow-up question. Who is it that determines when an applicant sends a request? Who is it that determines whether to give out the five thousand or say, as Mr. Kiefer said, no, this isn't what it's all about? Who decides that, how is that done?
Well, the application goes in front of the Historic Board, they make a recommendation to Council to approve it. To, not Council, I'm sorry, the CRA Board.
Okay, so you make a recommendation to us and you?
Right, but I think all we're looking for is direction on how much we're wanting to spend on certain items. Like, you know, if five people come forward and they want five thousand dollars each for landscaping, you know, I think that's excessive. Same with replacing the windows all the way around the house. You know, it's just, do we want to draw the line somewhere? Or are we okay with approving all these landscaping and small fences and stuff to, you know, kind of clean up the community?
So Mandy, what I would think, since there is maybe a question, put this on the next workshop. So we get clarification how that money could be used and give the Historic Board some guidance. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else?
Thanks for volunteering.
Would like to speak to the CRA subject? Okay, very good. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, in favor? We are adjourned. Council, do you want to file straight ahead into our regular meeting, or you want to take a break? What do you want to do?
Mayor, excuse me? We've got to shut Zoom down for this meeting and get everything going for the next meeting.
All right, everybody.
Five minutes.
There'll be a technical five-minute break before we start. Before we get started, and I call it to order, please take a look at video. This gives you a general idea of how these meetings are run, some of the more important things. If you want to speak, you can sign up in the lobby. If you don't sign up, you still will be given the opportunity to speak. Those that have signed up will be given first chance to speak. You will be given three minutes to speak. Have to have your name and address. Please turn off your phones. Your comments are being recorded and are being transcribed. Some people actually are listening to your comments on Zoom. So everything you say will go into a permanent retrievable record. Your comments, based on what you say, will be recorded and kept in the historical files. We do expect naturally to be respectful, Council, to more of you and you toward us. And when you're talking, we rarely have an issue with this. You address the Council. Some people, once in a while, will turn around and try to talk to the audience. You're making your plea to the Council. Normally, when you do speak to Council with your three minutes, we will not usually ask questions at that time because we do have a lot of business to do. We will listen. If there is something you said that piques our curiosity or something we want to know a little bit more about, we will ask you, but normally, we won't say too much after your comment, but we may make comment on it during the Council comment. That is part of the agenda. So with that, let's get started. I call the order. The City Council meeting, May ninth, 2022. It is now five forty-two. Please take note that we are starting a little late because of an overrun on this CRA meeting. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all continue to stand up? Is there anyone that's attending that would like to give us a short prayer or some words of wisdom or alage? Thank you very much, Annette.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. I thank you, Father, for the ability, be able to have free fellowship in a hall like this. I pray, Father, that you will give the leaders up here the wisdom to do the right things for the people that they work for. And I pray, Father, that everyone will get home safely. And please pray for the Ukraine Lords in Jesus Christ's name, and I ask and pray this. Amen.
Have a seat. Ms. Odom, can the cleats have roll call?
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Manion.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Cabbage.
Present.
Troy Slavery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Georgina Seig, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Julie Zanowski, Records Clerk.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yawkes.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Hand. Meeting for this, agenda for this meeting was posted on the City's website, City Hall, Waltonon Board, on Thursday, May fifth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom. Is there any Council comments on the agenda as published? I have received, Council, a request from Annette, who would like to speak to her building, which would normally be an Agenda Item Number Eleven, but she cannot stay that late. So she's asking if Council would allow her to speak so she does not, she can't stay, and she would like to have an opportunity to make a comment.
Can she comment during, I mean, that's fine, but I just, can she comment during public comment? Isn't that?
Well, it would be on the agenda, it's on the agenda, so she would have to wait till.
I mean, no, I doubt. We do the consent agenda, then have her speak.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay, Annette? Not yet, not yet. Okay, so that's the comment on the agenda. Here's how this works for public comments on non-agenda items. For those of you that are not familiar with how this works, the next phase will, you can come up and talk to Council for three minutes on any topic you want, unless it's one of the agenda items. If it is on the agenda, you have to wait till it comes up on the agenda, and then at that time, you will be allowed to speak. So where we're at right now is public comments on non-agenda items. You have your three minutes. We start off with anyone who has signed up. Ms. Odom?
Yes, sir. I have Wally Dunn.
My name is Wally Dunn. Live at 11386 Southwest Hendricks Drive. My knowledge in the item relates to a courtesy notice I received at my house on April the eighteenth. I learned later through a Freedom of Information Act that a number of notices went out to residents of our city between the eighteenth and the twenty-first. It was a total of nine. Eight went to Blue Cove, one went to me. Of those, it was to inform us residents that we were in code violation in either one of two areas. One had to do with the parking of an RV, boat, or utility trailer not in our backyards. If it was parked anywhere else, we were in violation. The other one related to commercial trucking that happened to be parked in somebody's yard. I found this pretty surprising because I was not aware that this was a code of our city. This sounds to me like a code of an HOA. That said, I went in and researched it, being a tax person who loves to read tax code and code in general, and read all the codes that we have related to this subject, and learned that, yes, if you park a boat, RV, or utility trailer in your driveway in front of your yard, on the side of your yard, you are in violation. So I actually posted that information on Facebook. And as of right now, there's been a hundred and seventy-one responses to that, most of which are very negative, most of them saying, we didn't come to Dunellen to live in HOA. Having said that, I went on to just do a survey of my own. What surprised me was the nine violations that went out. There was two for commercial trucking, one for a utility trailer, one for a boat, and four for an RV. When I did my personal survey today, riding around Blue Cove, I found fifteen boats in violation, six RVs, and I didn't look for trucks. When I went to Vault Springs, an area I used to live in, I found ten boats, four RVs, and five utility trucks. So my comment to you as a Council is I think we need to take a hard look at whether these notices should go out one, or should we consider looking at this code that we have on violations of parking boats and trucks in people's yards? If that is what we need to do, I think that's wonderful, we should do it. The only other comment I have, there was only nine of these that went out. Two people generally every month stand up and say something about code violations, one of which is my wife. And because of that, I think I was singled out and got this notice. Because upon further review, this notice does not apply to me because I do not live in a residential area of Dunellen. I live in an agriculture area, and this code does not apply to Zone A one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendricks Drive. I would implore the City Council to delay making any large purchases of real property prior to the Planning Council having a chance to weigh in on said purchases. We have citizens that volunteer to sit on the Planning Council one time a month. And it's very important to give us an opportunity to weigh in on our opinion on that and to make our recommendation to Council. There used to be a CRA Board made of citizens. The Sharkeys were on that board, Candy Craig was on that board. They resigned because they felt like nobody would give them an opportunity to give their opinions. There used to be a Code Enforcement Board made up of citizens. They dropped off because, again, so do we want to keep our boards, our volunteer citizens that serve on these boards? We need to give them a chance to make their recommendations to City Council prior to any large expenditures of that property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Odom?
Bill Bevver, 9552 Southwest 192nd Court Road, Dunellen. Just wanted to bring to the Council's attention, and I think most of you know this already, in an RRC meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was reported by several people that what they're noticing is the Kayak Adventures kayak operation was playing a shell game in terms of using Blue Run Park, which is prohibited under the new ordinance. And of course, you all participated in a lengthy program to get an ordinance so that we could enforce the rules of Blue Run Park, which included no commercial use. And I happened to be riding north on Route 41 myself one day, and I noticed that the KP Hole Shuttle pulled into the yard where the Kayak Adventures headquarters is. And I followed them all the way up, because I live up there, up to KP Hole Park. They had picked up tubes and kayaks and went up to KP Hole Park where they launched them, where they came out at Blue Run Park. So this is a shell game that I guess our attorney and our police officers are aware of this. But it's been going on for a while, and, you know, we're doing some things, I think, unloading people outside of the road, and we're doing things to avoid specifically violating the ordinance. But I urge the Council to look into this and let's take some action, not let this continue. This is a violation of all the work that we went through, and it's a violation of what the rules are. See what else I want to comment about? Oh, also, I did bring this up to the county's attention, and the county's response was, this is a Dunellen responsibility, they have the capability enforcing this on the road, and therefore, it's a Dunellen issue, even though it is a violation of the KP Hole transport contract, which is to transport tubes and kayaks from KP Hole to Blue Run Park, not to stop somewhere else and fill your trailer up with tubes and kayaks. your trailer up with tubes and kayaks, go up to KP Hole and launch up there, which is what's happening. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that this shell game is being played and I hope it can part to an end very soon. Thank you.
Ms. Odom, we might want to put that on the workshop. These are some of the things that I've noticed also. All right, Ms. Odom, who else has signed up?
I also have Ms. Stutzman signed up if you want to, or I'll hurry to go ahead and see.
Yes, Annette, here's, Annette?
Annette Stutzman, excuse me, 11990 South Green Street, Number 5, Dan Allen. I apologize, I'm not being able to be here for meetings, but I did find out that the city was once again looking for a place with the police department. I want to make it known on public record, I am offering my property, I think we discussed last Wednesday, for 250. With that being said, I also want to say, just with the, with location and everything, I hope there's not a vote on anything tonight, even if we have a dog in the pipe, that we really take the time to do our homework for this. Even with all the locations that I've been, that's brought to my attention, I've been in the parking lot with first responders since probably 1994. This is their best exit area to get fast and furious to any place they need to go and not, they don't always need to be fast and furious, but when it's fast and furious, they need to be. I asked that you please, please do your homework for this with location, but I wanted it on public record for hearing from me myself that this property was being offered at 250. I think the, the first responders need to be on demand drag, which is 41. They need to make a present there to let people know where to be reckoned with. And that's basically all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It's nice to have you back, thank you.
Anyone else signed up, Ms. Odom?
No, sir.
All right, well, we do to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. If you have not signed up, this is your opportunity, raise your hand and, yes, sir, name and address.
My name is Dr. Paul John Reinhart. I'm a 43-year resident at 325 South Jefferson Street, Beverly Hills, Florida, 34465. I'm also a Republican candidate for South, for State House District 23. It was newly redistricted, includes all Citrus County and the western area of Marion County, and that includes Dan Allen. And I'm coming to you here today, last time I was here was back in December, and I want to do a little progress report of what's going on. I'm very proud to be the Republican Teddy Roosevelt candidate. I'm bringing him back, a conservationist, and I'm quite proud of it because my great-grandfather first saw Florida, first ride off to see Florida was in Tampa, he was with the Roughriders and he charged up San Juan Hill with Teddy Roosevelt. So this is a nice type of thing to bring back, okay? And I'm in a race now, it suddenly opened up that it's an open primary for all parties. I hope it stays that way. And what I'm telling you today is that it's been a long journey since I was here last. I've been on airboats, I've been checking out different lands all over these proposed routes, even up in Levy County, up in Marion County, I've been at different commissions. And I just want to let you know that despite, I'm, I was the first candidate also to sign the No Build Pledge for candidates, I wrote this, some of the others as well, running, two of them running for Congress, some of them running for county commission in two, in two counties. And what I wanted to let you know, also school board people, what I really wanted to convey was that nothing in District 23 is ever a done deal. Don't think that just because some big developers want things, changes of commerce right want things, we live in a constitutional republic. It's up to the people. And that's what I did in Citrus County, I've heard, I've heard it was a done deal in Citrus County, and I've been fighting like hell to see that it wasn't a done deal. It's not a done deal in Marion County, it's not a done deal in Levy County, it's not a done deal anywhere. And I just wanted to let you know that, that the people have a voice, the people from all parties have a voice, the independent people have a voice, and I don't want you to ever forget that, because I'm not going to forget that. And when I'm elected, I will never forget that either. Take care.
Thank you, Dr. Reinhart. Appreciate it. Is there any other attendee that would like to speak? Tim? Name and address.
Yes, sir. Tim Heskey, 12140 Magnum Street, Dan Allen. I'd like to ask the council to remind people to disclose any personal gain for anything that they're asking for, projects they're presenting, et cetera. I spoke with Art just outside here with one rate at a time, went back and looked at the records up from last Wednesday's meeting, nowhere did he disclose any personal gain with the project that he is asking for dollars for. Tonight, outside, he said, you know, he will bring that up tonight. And I just want to let everybody else know, I'm not for his project, but I'm definitely not against fixing this river. Actually, with Art's project, my property will be the first property that will benefit for this, and I'm still not for spending the dollars, so with, you know, I have, definitely have interest in it. Also, people should be forthright. Jestered towards me saying some people are okay with poisoning the river, when outside he finally admitted that he contacted the state recently to have these same chemicals he calls poisons, applied to his own waterfront. This just happened because his one rate at a time method is unable to keep up. This is anything but forthright. My passion for fixing the roads is, when he gestured also towards me that, oh, we don't want to fix the river, we want to spend it on the roads. We live at the bottom of a hill that goes into a cul-de-sac, okay? Just outside of our property, and I haven't minded the potholes because they actually act like speed bumps that slow down the people that come through, the sightseers and such. Okay, but what does happen is the children come through because it's on a hill, they love coming down the hill, you know, firing down, and then winging around in a circle, and then pedaling back up. But what happens is, okay, this just recently happened, and I got on the website, okay, joy came right out, fixed the potholes, you know, but they're in low areas, so they are bad all the time, you know, they just get washed out, just due to the nature of them. So my passion is not take the money, just spend it on any road, et cetera, it's for real. Just a few, actually, the last time, a couple of weeks ago, when I put the thing in to get the potholes fixed, okay, a sister and brother was coming down the road, I was in the garage doing some work, and the only thing I had on was tennis shoes and my shorts. So I hear the commotion outside, turn around and look, and this little girl's picking up her big, her older brother, he's looking, the little girl's this tall, her brother's maybe like this. He hit the potholes, crashed and burned, skinned up. I walked out there, like I said, I'm tennis shoes and shorts, okay, looked like some hairy McGee look gorilla creature coming up to this little child and going to help, you know, whatever I can do to help. This little girl stands there and points up to me, "You need to fix your road, mister." So that's what the road thing is all about, it's not just build new roads and all that, that's not what I'm up here for. The taxpayers have paid for enough things over years, it sounded good on the surface, but failed, you know, at tremendous cost. So I'm just asking that homework is done before we go giving our tax funds away, you know, and just not repeat, you know, some of the things that were good in the past, and especially sometimes when people, the presenters are not quite forthright. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who's attending that would like to speak? Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Art Jones, 12163, I'm out of way to Dan Allen. And yeah, Tim is right, I didn't say that specifically my house is on that section of the river, which would be the first area that we clean up. So to disclose that to the council, the Lower Rainbow River, that is where I live. We're looking to start on the Lower Rainbow River because that's where swift mud has identified as the most egregious problems of silt and buildup of hydrella. It's where, where most of the areas of eelgrass are no longer existent. So it just makes sense that that's where we would start. Also, as far as chemicals go, I wish we didn't have to use anything on the river. They're all poisons to the plants, we don't know what they do to everybody else. But I went up to Gainesville and spoke to FWC in person, I took them little bags of those little jellies from the Aquaphol Super K and showed it to them, I said, "You realize that these are still in the river, they're not biodegradable?" And they said, "Well, unfortunately, it's one of the tools in our toolbox, it's one of our important tools in our toolbox, and until something better comes along, we're not going to stop using it." Okay, I have respect for that, you know, they're not going to stop using it, they've been using it here for almost 30 years. When our river got so clogged up last summer, the neighbors are like, "Art, what's going on?", you know, you know, the year before, I had hired someone, spent $20,000 hand-raking that canal, had it looking really good. However, I ran out of funds, and so now I couldn't hire someone to help me. It's just impossible to keep up on it. So yeah, I called up, I said, "Can you do something?", I called up Christine, "Do you have the schedule to put out the Aquaphol Super K and knock back the hydrella?", I said, "We're ready for it." So yeah, you know, that's, that's what we got to do. It's not perfect, I wish we didn't have to do it, but I believe that the only way we can get away from using herbicides and poisons on the river for the long term is to really thoroughly go in there and clean the river, back down to the nice sandy bottoms, get it ready, replant eelgrass so that eelgrass now becomes the dominant SAV under the water. We've proven in Crystal River that the eelgrass will outcompete the hydrella, it, once it gets its roots down, roots down deep into the substrate and into the sand, it will grow faster and it will shade out the hydrella and it will become dominant once again. And that would be better for the wildlife, for everybody, and we can stop battling the hydrella. Another thing is that living right on the river, I see it every day, I mean, they just, they just poisoned it again three weeks ago, and now there's just big chunks of dead hydrella all over the place, there's huge gobs floating down the river. We just did a cleanup at the city beach, taken out a lot of dead hydrella, so I'm just hoping there can be a better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else who's attending that would like to speak? Here's your chance. You will have an opportunity again to speak as we come to the various agenda items. So if you're here for a specific item, when we get to it, you will again have an opportunity to speak. So Manny, please make note that at 6:17, public comment, general public comment has concluded. The reason I want to point this out, from time to time, we get a comment that our meetings last a long time. Just want to make note that 45, basically 45 minutes of our meeting has been for public comment, which we never used to do in the past. So right there, that adds a lot of time on, so those that are concerned about the length of meetings, this is one of the reasons. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I received a written comment, may I read it into the record?
Absolutely.
Dear Mayor and Councilmembers.
Who is it from?
This is from Ken and Andrea Luther, 11854 East Blue Cove Drive. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, on April 18th, we received a code enforcement courtesy notice regarding the RV and boat parked on our property and instructing that they should be parked on the rear half of the lot. A copy of the notice is attached. We immediately complied and moved the RV and boat accordingly. We have parked an RV at the side of the house since 2014, as we have done at previous homes in Hillsdale, New Jersey, and Plantation, Florida, which were completely in compliance with city codes there. The RVs were not used, were not used for living, nor in disrepair or under restoration. I am not a driveway mechanic. The boat, which is used regularly, I park in front of the garage, but can park it at the other side of the house if necessary. City codes I am familiar with, state parking is allowed behind the front line of the house. We feel the code enforcement, as now informed here after all this time, is not reasonable, especially as our RV is new, 2022, and our boat is new, 2016, and we received no complaints from our neighbors. Indeed, we try to maintain our property to a high standard and have spent almost as much as the original purchase price on renovations and improvements by a local contractor and according permits and code. In conclusion, we ask that the city code be amended in line with other city codes we have experienced, especially as no complaints from neighbors have been expressed, nor from the HOA here in Blue Cove concerning the past parking arrangements. Yours respectfully, Kenneth Luther.
Thank you very much. So that concludes this portion of the public comment. Now we're going to go to the consent agenda, if you have a, an agenda printout, we're near the bottom of the page. The consent agenda, for those of you that are not familiar with it, would be the first five agenda items. Number one, city council minutes, number two, an agreement for pole barns, number three, and four and five, which is the proclamations. What this means is counsel has already pre-discussed these at the workshop previously, so it's a consensus that we are in agreement. So after we get done with public comment on these first five, council will possibly pass all five of these with one vote. Okay, at this time, Ms. Odom, has anybody signed up to make comment on the consent agenda? Is anyone who's, who's here right now, would you like to speak to anything that's on the consent agenda, that'd be items one, two, three, four, five? Please note, no one has wanted to speak to that. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I'm excited to be a previous presenter.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Passes unanimously. So with that, we are now at number six on the agenda, which is the presentation of proclamation to Eagle Scout Alex Joseph and Tyler Ellis. All right, Ms. Odom, are we ready?
Yes, if you want to, the first one I'll read is for Alex.
Okay. Alex?
Proclamation number PRO 202207, in recognition of Eagle Scout Alex Taylor Joseph. We get to have our scout names up for both of them.
Yes, start over. Let everybody, let's have the scout leaders and Alex.
Alex, Alex is even here.
He's not here.
And he is Tyler.
Okay, why don't you all come on up? This is the proclamation that she will read, okay?
Whereas being the younger brother of other Eagle Scouts, Alex Taylor Joseph grew up learning how, learning the 12 laws of Boy Scouts even before he was of age to join and began tagging along and join the scout program as soon as he was of age. And whereas Alex has worked diligently through the years to meet the requirements for the most honored rank in the Boy Scouts of America, the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas, an Eagle Scout's first responsibility is to prove he is trustworthy and to always live with honor, and second responsibility is to be loyal to his troop with devotion to his community, to his country, and God. And whereas, to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, Alex had to plan, develop, and give leadership to others in a service project helpful to a religious institution, school, or within his community other than the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas, an Eagle Scout must earn 21 merit badges to include first aid, citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the world, communication, cooking, personal fitness, emergency preparedness, or lifesaving, environmental science, or sustainability, personal management, swimming or hiking or cycling, camping, and family life. And whereas, having achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout, Alex has proven that he is prepared to be a leader by holding the position of Assistant Patrol Leader. And whereas, Alex was honored at an Eagle Scout Ford of Honor at Dan Allen Methodist Church on April 2nd, where he received many accolades from local organizations during the ceremony, such as the Lions Club and the Sons of the American Revolution. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Dan Allen, Florida, that Alex Taylor Joseph is truly an outstanding young man and sets an admirable example of honor, perseverance, loyalty, and courage to his peers and all who look up to him. Be it further proclaimed that Alex lends new definition to the meaning of leadership and stands applauded this day by the Dan Allen City Council. Unanimously approved and delivered with great pride on the ninth day of May 2022.
And with great pride, I please send this to you with the signature of William White, Mayor, Valerie Henshaw, Vice Mayor, Anita Williams, Councilwoman, Police Penny, Councilwoman, and Jan Covaj, Councilwoman, signed and attested by Ms. Odom, let the city see. Congratulations. And when we get done with the second. And when we get done with the second one, if any of you would like to make a short, you know, talk. Okay. Ms. Odom, we have now Tyler Russell Ellis. Is Tyler there?
No, he had to work.
Okay.
Our teenager's working.
So we will read a very similar proclamation for him. We divided it up into two separate ones because of the field. Should be separate, but same things involved.
Ready? Proclamation number PRO two thousand twenty-two zero eight in recognition of Eagle Scout Tyler Russell Ellis. Being the younger brother of other Eagle Scouts, Tyler Russell Ellis grew up learning the twelve laws of Boy Scouts even before he was of age to join and began tagging along and join the scout program as soon as he was of age. And whereas, Tyler has worked diligently through the years to meet the requirements for the most honored rank in Boy Scouts of America, the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas, an Eagle Scout's first responsibility is to prove he is trustworthy and to always live with honor, and second responsibility is to be loyal to his troop with devotion to his community, to his country, and to God. And whereas, to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, Tyler had to plan, develop, and give leadership to others in a service project helpful to a religious institution, school, or within his community other than the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas, an Eagle Scout must earn twenty-one merit badges to include first aid, citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the world, communication, cooking, personal fitness, emergency preparedness, or lifesaving, environmental science, or sustainability, personal management, swimming, or hiking, or cycling, camping, and family life. And whereas, having achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout, Tyler has proven that he is prepared to be a leader by holding the position of Senior Patrol Leader. And whereas, Tyler was honored at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor at the Denellan Methodist Church on April second, where he received many accolades from local organizations during the ceremony, such as the Lions Club and the Sons of the American Revolution. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Denellan, Florida, that Tyler Russell Ellis is truly an outstanding young man and sets an admirable, admirable example of honor, perseverance, loyalty, and courage to his peers and all who look up to him. Be it further proclaimed that Tyler lends new definition to the meaning of leadership and stands applauded by, applauded this day by the Denellan City Council, unanimously approved and delivered with great pride on the ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-two.
Very good. And again, unanimously approved by the city council, which is William White, Mayor, Valerie Henshaw, Vice Mayor, Nia Williams, Councilwoman, Lisa Penny, Councilwoman, Jan Kovich, Councilwoman, signed and attested by Ms. Odom of the official City Council. Congratulations. No longer than forty-five minutes.
All right, um, so three of my sons, and this is one, Tyler is one of my sons, achieved Eagle. And, um, very few of the Eagle Scouts that we've had in our troops only make twenty-one merit badges. Most of them do thirty to thirty-six merit badges. Um, they have to work very hard, and these ones that they listed are not easy merit badges. There's a lot of paperwork, and it is not fun for some of them. Um, even the cooking, the hiking, and the first aid. And I think the cooking has thirty-six pages that they have to complete, um, writing. And everybody thinks when they come in that, oh, we get to cook. Well, no, they have to learn about, um, foodborne allergies. They have to learn first aid or any, um, problems that may happen in a kitchen. They have to, um, talk about allergies. They have to plan menus. And it has to be nutritional menus, so it can't just be a hot dog, chips, and pickle. So these boys were, and now we have girls, work very hard. But as in most youth organizations, we are really struggling to get children into just our Cub Scout, especially pre-COVID, or post-COVID. We're trying to build back up. But this is a foundation, our youth is our foundation, no matter what way, whether it's explorers, whether it's scouts, whatever it is. So I would encourage our council to encourage our youth more in the city of Denellan because we have not seen, even as a troop and our Cub Scouts, um, very much. We get asked to do things, but most of the time it's to clean, honestly. So do you want to help previous BJs up to Denellan, or, um, whatever it is? Well, can you get all the trash? You know, they want to have fun too. They don't mind doing service, but they want to have fun with doing the service. So, um, so if you would just, in the future, think about our children. And I know that teenagers can be little turds sometimes. And having had five of them, I understand. But they work really, really hard to try to be better people every day, especially in our scouting program. And I thank you very much for this proclamation. This is a first for us. We didn't know it was available. So we have two more coming up. George Jones is one of our ones that is working. In fact, we're going to go to a conference tonight so that he can get his Star Scout, and then he'll get his Life Scout after six months, and then he'll be working on his Eagle Scout project. So if there's anything that you all think that you could help us come up with an Eagle Scout project, our scouts are always looking for something. So, but unfortunately, we only have three members now of our scout troop. So, you know, we'll fold if we don't get more.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Did you have a boot at either the Boomtown Days Festival or the Art Festival?
Not this year because, um, we, we do our calendar a year ahead, six months to a year. In fact, we're going back to a committee meeting tonight to plan our, for the next six months. So, um, we don't always know when the time is going to come, and sometimes we have camping. A lot of council events usually fall on those weekends of whatever Denellan things are doing.
You're asking for some comments?
Support, yes, sir.
So one thing I could strongly recommend, these big events that are for the city are known months ahead of time.
Okay.
And we were just reported by the Chamber of Commerce at Boomtown Days, the attendance in one day was ten thousand people.
Wow.
Ten thousand people circulated to Boomtown Day.
So is it on your-
Perfect opportunity to have a boot. You could hustle collections, you could hand out pamphlets, you know.
Is it on your website?
Uh, yeah.
I am putting you in charge of that, George.
It would be, uh, I, I, I think it would accomplish a lot of things, and I'm sure those organizations would work something out with it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, check Denellan Chamber of Commerce, Business Chamber of Commerce. They're the ones who organize it, so they'll have the schedule up and going for, like, there's Jazz Up Denellan coming in probably September.
Okay.
Or, we don't call it Jazz Up Denellan anymore. It's, it's something like that.
Two River Music Festival.
Right, and we used to do those all the time, but you know, then it happened.
So we have three boys that's part of this.
Well, I have, yeah, and I've been sick, so that was it. I'm just coming back.
I respect everyone has for what you do.
Thank you.
I think if you needed help manning a boot, I'll be the first to volunteer, so.
Well, thank you, we really appreciate that.
You don't have a problem. There will be plenty of people that would step up.
Yes, because we, you know, we there are our energy.
We'll take the reason there's, we don't have energy to do it. You do have someone who will do it.
Well, we appreciate that, thank you very much. And thank you for allowing us, doing this and allowing us to be here tonight.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to, ma'am, I just want to point out to you all, if you go to our website, denellan.org, and go to the Agenda and Minutes page, there's a link to our YouTube channel. It will be, the video will be posted if you want to show it to the boys.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay?
Good luck, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
For all you do, for all you do. All right. So now we, we just took care of agenda item number six. Now we're moving to number seven. Very exciting thing we're looking forward to.
Riveting.
Riveting. Fiscal year two thousand twenty dash, two thousand twenty-one, annual audit, audit presentation, Richard Powell, Powell and Jones CPA. Right?
Uh, it's a pleasure delivering the annual audit of, of the city of Denellan. Uh, we performed the audit this year both on site and partly remotely. Uh, we performed fieldwork, we prepared the financial report. Uh, it's been reviewed by Jan and her staff, so this is the formal presentation. Uh, in the interest of your full agenda, I'll try to be brief and, and to the point, but be pleased to answer any questions, address any concerns of the city council at any time. On page four, five, and six is the audit opinion. It states that it's a complete audit of the city conducted in accordance with applicable auditing standards that include the financial auditing standards and the government auditing standards, the two levels of required audit procedures. In an audit, what you seek is a clean, unmodified opinion that states that the financial statements are an accurate reflection of, uh, where the city stood at the end of the fiscal year, what transpired financially during the year. You have that highest level of assurance, which is a good reflection on the quality of the financial records and practices of the city. Next, you have some, the next section is some overview required information, but due to the fact that it is derived from the financial statements, I'll go directly to the pertinent financial statements. The first one being on page sixteen. Okay, so, uh, uh, after the city divested its utility operations, the city now has two funds, governmental funds, the general fund and the CRA fund. If you were here at the prior meeting, I discussed the CRA fund, but here, again, I explained it's included in the city's audit. So assets, what you own. Total assets of these funds were six million, five twenty-three-seven-seven. Total liabilities, two fifty-five-six-nineteen. Fund balances are cash reserves. So the total fund balances are six million, two sixty-four-seven-fifty-eight. City of Denellan has a number of classifications of restricted fund balances, which you can see. But at the bottom, you can see the unassigned fund balance, three million, one fifty-two, three twenty. That is basically the unrestricted reserve under control of the city council, and that represents, uh, at least one year of normal expenditures. So that's a healthy fund balance for your unrestricted reserve. The next statement on page eighteen is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So the revenues of these funds were three million, three seventy-two, eight fourteen. Expenditures, three million, three twenty-three, one eighty-nine. So overall, you were positive forty-nine thousand, six twenty-five, which increased your fund balance to the six million, two sixty-four-seven-fifty-eight. And if you look over in general fund, it was positive three forty-six, nine thirty-eight. So, so that was a healthy year's operations for general fund. And again, your reserves, ending reserves are adequate for a city your size, and you have a, a, a very healthy unrestricted fund balance. On page twenty, uh, shows the basically balance sheet of your pension trust funds. Assets, four million, nine seventy-two, one eighty-three. All of that's reserved for future pension payments, and that's, that's your public safety employees. On page twenty-one, it shows the revenues and expense of the pension funds. And you had a very, uh, successful year in investment earnings. And overall, the net position increased eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine thirty-six. So, uh, it, and I've noticed, uh, in FRS and in a lot of areas, last year was a very good year for pension fund earnings for some reason. After that, your notes and disclosures. Majority of your notes are kind of required disclosures. But on page thirty-six is a table that shows the status of your capital fixed assets. And it kind of shows that your depreciable assets at cost were about five million dollars, four million, nine fifty-five, three eighty-nine. Cumulated depreciation, two million, eight seventy-five, two fifteen. Net assets a little over two million. So it shows your capital assets are about fifty-eight percent depreciated. And, uh, of the cities of which I'm aware, that probably that's a little bit older than average. Average is probably fifty to fifty-five percent. So you're just a little bit older than, uh, you know, than, uh, compared with cities. But again, that's a reason that you need to have adequate reserves so that you have funds that you can replace and improve those assets as needed. The next thing I always like to look at is the debt of the city. And so, uh, the main debt of the city are the, is the, the revenue bond issue that you have. The balance at the end of the year was one million, nine sixty-eight, seven fifty. You're paying that off at a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. It bears no interest, so it's just a principal loan. Uh, the rest of your long-term liabilities were compensated absences, eighty-five thousand. OPEB, thirty-seven thousand, eight eighty-four. Fairly small. And I'll just mention that, uh, Denellan is very unusual and very blessed in that you're, you have a defined benefit pension plan for which you're responsible, your public safety, uh, plan, and usually there's a pension liability, net pension liability. But you have a positive, which is called now an asset, of two million, two forty-seven, three oh-six. So your pension plan is fully funded and even has excess reserves, which is very good. So, uh, overall, financially, you've lived within your budget. You were stronger overall at the end of the year by about forty-seven thousand. General funds, you were about, uh, stronger by three hundred and forty-six thousand. So you had a successful year of financial. On page sixty-one is our report regarding audit procedures required by government auditing standards. These go beyond just financial numbers, include internal control of open financial reporting. These go beyond just financial numbers, include internal control of open financial reporting, compliance with various laws, regulations, policies of the city. In this report, there are no findings or questions asked. Management letter on page sixty-three, sixty-four, and here we would include recommendations that were not applicable to the prior report. And here, very pleased to say there were no recordable findings in the prior year, no recordable findings in the current year. We determined that the city was not in a financial emergency as defined by our statutes. We did financial condition assessment procedures, I've given you the highlights of those. On page sixty-five, we were required to perform audit procedures regarding your investment of public funds. We did and had no findings. Finally, on page sixty-seven, sixty-eight is a communication between our firm and City Council, basically states that we had no disagreements with management in completing the audit. We were given access to all documents, records we requested, and had full cooperation from the staff in completing the audit. So be pleased to answer any questions of the City Council.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say thank you as always for making a complicated subject fairly easy to understand, and, but it's always been a pleasure to have you all here. You've always done an outstanding job, so it's great to see I'm like I'm just reading your professional standards. I mean, that nothing that our staff has done has any mistakes that needed attention, and it just goes to your good looking over everything, and to of course Jan and her staff are doing a great job, so thank you very much for proving us that something we've already known, that Jan's a good, good staff member, good management.
I appreciate your comment.
Anyone else?
Thank you, sir, for your report, and hats off to our great city staff.
Absolutely.
Ms. Kovace?
I also would like to thank you for coming and assuring us that we have nothing to worry about in respects of our current financial situation, and that we have more than capable staff. Thank you.
Ms. Kenny?
I'm in.
I'd just like to say this is proof positive of a city that's living within its means. When you examine other municipalities, whether it's local municipalities, county, state, federal, they purged money, money's flying all over the place, no one really has a true understanding where the money's going. And when you think that this city operates as it operates with the funds that we have, I look at us as a shining example for other municipalities to how to stretch a nickel, as far as you can stretch. It's quite amazing, when I first start understanding the numbers that were running this city, there's individuals in this town that have that much in cash in their safety deposit bunch. So it is quite amazing what we're able to do with what we have, and to keep it all under control and keep it perking along, it's super. And it's a reflection on staff, it's a reflection on council making decisions to make sure we live within our means. I think it's a success story for all of us. Congratulations, everybody.
Ms. McRae, I have one question that I did write down. Jan, when he talked about the fifty-eight percent depreciation of our capital, was that like, I know we just purchased new trucks for Flores Department, was that part of it, or did that not reflect that bad, like, was that what that was describing?
Part of it.
Okay.
Overall, we had some major projects and bought new assets, and the percentage was greater, I believe, the last couple of years, it was greater than fifty-eight percent. Yes, when you add items in, that reduces a percent, but then you have another year of regular depreciation on the other item, so.
Get the catch up, yeah.
So it is, it's a challenge to, to keep that number, but, and I think Jan's right, it's been in the fifties for several years, so it's not, you know, you are battling the depreciation issue.
Thank you.
Ms. Powell, thank you very much.
Great, appreciate it.
Safe travels home.
Yes.
Yes. Safe on your return trip to St. Louis.
Yes.
Take care.
Yes. All right. For those that are following, we are now at agenda item number eight. We have Chief McQuaid, who was just in term, after being at a seminar, and he's going to give us a report, we're looking forward to what Chief has to say.
Well, appreciating the time, counsel, to come up, and what I'd really like to do is let you know what the police department really does. There's a lot of people in the community does not do, does not know what we do, so that's what my presentation is going to be about tonight, is what we really do. So I've compiled for the last couple of months what we have done, and I'm over how we get to there, investigate those. We have worked agasols, aggravated assaults, vapor acts, batteries, ag batteries, burglaries, counterfeit, subcriminelles, deaths, disturbances, both divested, but we've had one extortion, fleeing and eluding, found property, lost property. We have Marchman Act people. There's a difference between the Baker Act and the Marchman Act. Marchman Act is only for drugs or alcohol, but the Baker Act is for people who are mentally unstable. We have also worked missing juveniles, my part in investigations. We have closed. Don't be sad.
No, no, you're good.
Sorry. That's okay, I knew what you wanted. We have closed.
There was just some talk here.
Yeah, I heard it. We have closed two houses where we got rid of the renters, they go on to the property owners, and we've also, and I got to tell you about this one yesterday, we also got rid of the drug dealer, that was a juvenile, but we had to spend two and a half days with him in the hospital, and we dodged a big bullet, because when we arrested him, he also had a pickup order, or we called a warrant, and he had a broken wrist, we had to not touch him to break his wrist, and he also complained of being dehydrated, I'm sorry, had, he was feeling faint, and we could see it, called for the medics, took him to the first hospital, they refused to treat him, and so I got on board, I was gone at the time, but my staff handled this very well. I got on the phone with the juvenile authorities, and they said we have not received him yet, the hospital has not taken him, we're going to have to take him to Shands in Gainesville. So for two and a half days, twenty-four hours a day, we sent this young juvenile, and he is a menace to society, and so we finally threw him out, worked with the sheriff's office attorneys and with the state attorney's office, because the juvenile folks wanted us to consume the bill for him being in the hospital. But through the state attorney's office and our attorneys with the sheriff's office, we convinced them that the warrant, he was in custody of the juveniles when we picked him up for the warrant, and they had the bill for him. I just got news today, because of his past record, this has all happened in Dunellen because of his past record, he has been adjudicated an adult, and he will go to prison as a seventeen-year-old as an adult. So that just happened today. But you can see my staff was short shipped, but we still maintained him for two and a half days, twenty-four hours a day in Gainesville. So now then, we also worked traffic crashes, and I'm proud to say in the last month or so, I forget, two months, we issued fifty-one parking citations of this parking lot out here. Now you say, well, that's easy to do, you just go up and see if they're violating, they're parking on the grass, you're right, then put it on the windshield. We haven't lost a case yet, because we go further, we take a picture of the tag, we take a picture of the violation, what they're violating, and then we write the report on it. So it's just not going out there and writing the citation. You got to win, it's easy to write the citation, but we want to win it in court. As you've heard me say many times, how many people have went to prison, that's because of the job that these officers do, and they have, like I said, every citation has a picture of the tag and of the violation. Like if there's no parking on the grass, they'll take a picture of that sign with the car, so it's easily to read, and we don't lose cases. So, Matt, if you would, put the first one up.
It's ready.
This is a, this is a theft. This is when we have a theft, put us in custody, in other words, he's committed a theft either at Walmart, one of the grocery stores, which we have bought a few of those, or one of these shops along our shopping centers. So we get the call from the information center given by the victim or dispatch, and the officer responds to the scene, and we're there normally thirty-five minutes. Of all that offers are valid, he's had to speak to the victim and witnesses and the suspect. Remember, this is in custody, the company or the store or whatever has him there. The officer counts all the stolen goods to determine the value. If we don't determine the value, it could be a misdemeanor or a felony. So we have to do an inventory of the stolen property, also collects the evidence, if any, at this time. Now, the merchandise, we do not keep, we'll run it through the cash register, and we'll get a cash register receipt. So as you can see now, we're on the theft, we're there for a long time. We're not just pull up, put the guy in the back of the car, drive off, we have to investigate it. Once we determine that there is probable cause for the arrest, if it's an adult, it takes at least thirty-eight to forty-five minutes to drive from here to the jail in Ocala. So now we're into this several hours. Once we get to the jail, if it's on a Friday or Saturday, we're not, we just can't drop the prisoner off, there's a booking process we go through, and also the Marion County Sheriff's Department is bringing in prisoners, Bellevue's bringing in prisoners, the City of Ocala is bringing in prisoners, and we're bringing in prisoners that have been arrested. So it's just not a drop-off. There's a lot of paperwork to put somebody in jail. Now they got to drive back to the city, spend all traffic, at good times, it's what, forty minutes from Ocala, and they're not through to this case yet. They've got the probable cause, now they got to write the report. So we're talking just a simple case, at least a half a day. At least a half a day, okay, natural? Residential burglary. If we're dispatch there, first of all, we got to determine the entry and exit point, who the victim is, what's been taken. Upon a rifle, we must talk to the all the victims, if there's any witnesses, and we will go around to determine if anybody has cameras, that can determine where the entry and the exit point is. So, and then we, if we have a suspect, we must find the suspect, and then we got to complete the intake paperwork again, if we arrest someone for this. If not, there's many cases where we have to do photographs of the person, to do a photographic lineup. There again, the officer that's working the case cannot do the photographic lineup, it has to be by an officer, has nothing to do with the case. So it's just not a matter of fact, just going out to someone's home, writing a piece of paper, and saying they have a burglary here. There's a lot of work to this, to just a burglary, and we must collect the evidence. We fingerprint everything inside the house, we know or suspect that the suspect has touched. We collect, normally sometimes they'll cut themselves, go in through windows and doors or whatever, so we've got blood and all that we've got to collect. So this is a long process. It's not just going out and saying, oh, you have a burglary, quote your name, and go into the office and put it down. Okay? How many of you know that we have to investigate every death that is in the city limits of our, every death, we have to investigate? Once again, I want to give you the protocol of what it takes to do a death investigation inside our city limits. And by the way, I come up with this death protocol when I also made a promise to Marion County Sheriff's Office many years ago. Your dispatch to a death, the officer that's, the dispatch must notify supervisor within the police department. He is the, the death is to determine the cause and visually inspect the person that who has passed away. Then if you go down, if there's no foul play, no trauma, no drug or alcohol, then you go down to the next one, we ask if he's under doctor's care. If he is under a doctor's care, we must contact the doctor, we must ask the doctor if he will sign the death certificate, and if the doctor says yes, he has signed the death certificate, then we will arrange and wait for the funeral coach to come and pick up the body. That's if everything is in order. If under the doctor's care, the doctor says no, I will not, then we go to, the doctor will not sign, then we must contact a medical examiner, who will respond and give instructions, and then we request for the medical transport and for the funeral dust point. As you can see, this is half to three-quarters of a day that it takes to do each one of these death investigations. And, but then if we determine there's foul play, as you can see over the light, over some of his grills, then we will have our partners, the Marion County Sheriff's Office, if we determine there's foul play or something, to come out and work the, help us with the investigation or do the investigation.
Marion.
Yep. Baker Act. The Baker Act is where we did, we did call, and the person is determined or reported to us be mentally ill. So once again, if we are dispatch to someone who is mentally ill, we note, supervisor notified, we determine the circumstances and the visual inspection. Whoop, wrong one. I put him in the trailer, and he's not there yet. Baker Act. Each subject is the, is determined that he meets the criteria for the Baker Act. The Baker Act, by its, by state statutes, got to meet certain criteria, because we're not, we're not doctors, we're not medics, we're not, but we have the power to take you off the street, to get you evaluated mentally, and that's a huge responsibility to place on a policeman to determine this. So the officer determines if they meet the criteria for Baker Act, then they must transport this person to the nearest receiving facility, which is located in Ocala, and there again is at least thirty minutes away, there's paperwork there that we must fill out, and once again, there are also the receiving facility for some of the Fifth Circuit, which is Marion County Sheriff's Office, Ocala Police Department, Bellevue Police Department, and for Dunellen. So then we, after we do the paperwork there, we must drive back and complete the report. We've got him there, got him there, now we must complete the report, which takes quite a bit of time. If we feel that we're there talking to the person that does not meet the criteria, then we can contact the local response team to schedule further assistance, and we also use them on ones that we suspect but are very close to be, need to be we can contact the local response team to schedule further assistance. And we also use them on ones that we suspect but are very close to be, need to be Baker Act. So as you can see, uh, I'm hopeful the council gives a better view and the public also that the Dunellen Police Department, uh, does a good job. We arrest a lot of people, we make a lot of cases, and, uh, I'm very proud of this agency. And, uh, that's the reason I defend it like I do. So, Mr. Council, have any questions?
Comments, Ms. Scovish?
I don't know how you get all this done. It's just unbelievable. And I am very happy that you came today to make this presentation. I wish there was more people present to take notice of what your department actually does and what you have to do. And then again, you have all these other things that you do of your own volition to help our citizens. So I thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Kenny, any comments?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I am welcome, yeah. Um, Chief, I appreciate the Dunellen Police Department. I really do. And this is a wonderful presentation because it lets us know all that you guys do. And I think it's the truth. I really do. And to, I just want to make a comment. I had a little eighth, um, a little eight-year-old great niece with me today. She could not go to school for three days, so her mom asked me to keep her. And I took her to see her mom's first grade teacher and her mom's retired teacher. And she asked, she said, well, what is it that you would like to do when you grow up? Because she's a very smart girl. The child said, a police officer. I think she needed to see this presentation, she might change her mind.
I appreciate that.
But that's what she said, eight years old.
Eight years old.
Vice Mayor?
Um, Chief, I mean, I'm not surprised by the work that goes into this. I mean, common sense tells us that you do these things 10 times more as well. Um, I mean, I've had experiences with you personally, Sally, and the death issue of my godmother. Um, you know, y'all have been the ones that have checked the doors of our business and called me when one of, back in the day when one of my agents didn't lock the door behind them. And I came up and locked the door. Um, so it's not just, you know, y'all sitting out there with the radar gun and trying to get people speeding through Dunellen. Um, and you didn't even go into all that and how little money we get off of that, which is just always still so surprising to me. But, um, you know, when, when people make comments or come and talk to us, tell us that we really don't need you anymore, um, I think they should be the ones coming and speaking to you. And there's always room for improvement, absolutely, but I'm not sure how much more streamlining you can get your profession and protect us. And again, you, I, I know from back stories that y'all do a lot of, um, community service and you don't advertise.
And I haven't even mentioned that. This is just criminal cases that we work.
But again, you're, you're men and women. I mean, y'all say you all serve the community, it's just not catching the bad guys, or girls, but it's helping those that fall through the cracks. And I know for a fact that y'all help those that fall through the cracks and are there to serve others that we don't even know about. So thank you for your dedication. Y'all's profession, nobody could ever pay y'all enough.
Thank you. That doesn't include all the cars that we unlock for people who...
The gas and the trees.
Two comments and then a couple direct questions. I would suggest if anyone on council has a question of what a normal police day is like, talk with Chief and let him take you for a ride and you'll get an idea of what it's like.
Come sit in the office.
Yeah, so if you really want to see it, uh, there is an opportunity to experience it. Another thing, Chief, I realize when you go through all the procedures that you spelled out, primarily, there's two reasons, number one, going through these procedures, you want to get it right.
You want to get it right.
And you also know if you don't go through these procedures, the person that's accused will then have a defense to get out of what he's being charged for because you did do the procedures.
Absolutely.
So there's a double-edged sword there. You want to get it right and you have to do it if you want a, an arrest to stick.
That's the reason why our procedure, general order book, is this thick.
So just the two questions I have is I know we try, we try our best to have two officers on duty all the time, but on our occasions, for whatever reason, we may have one. If our one officer has to take someone to Marion County, as you said, 38-minute ride, walk them back, and possibly an hour or more to check in, what's, what kind of coverage does the city have when your singular officer has not...
Through our MOU with the Marion County Sheriff's Office, they will come in and work calls of an emergency nature, just like when they take someone to jail. Their coverage is, is also going to be caused by the Sheriff's Office is, uh, needs some employees, just letting you say that. We will help cover them also.
So that would be one of your reasons, and I understand it, why it's so important for you to have two officers, number one. Sometimes one officer isn't enough with a real tough situation. And secondly, one of your officers could have to leave the city to take care of business.
We have still someone in the city.
We're depending on the sheriff coming in, and we know they're stretched out all, all over the place. So that's a good point, why you continue to ask, have your shifts having two officers.
Yes, sir.
Then one question I have to ask, because it's probably the singular thing I hear the most often, is do your officers fill out their reports while they're still on duty?
Yes. As a matter of fact, they cannot go home unless they get special permission. In other words, let's just say somebody gets off at 6:00, but at 4:00, he makes a real bad arrest and he's due to get off at 6:00. So it's 8:00 at night, he's done the probable cause or she, then we may let that person come back the next morning after they slept some because the report is so important. But 80, 95% of the time, they must complete their reports before they go home.
All right. So would it be correct to say that an officer would have great difficulty writing a report as they're driving? Would that be a correct statement?
Well, I've done a lot of things in my years of, uh, refereeing a report and drove it.
I'm going with, I better go somewhere like that. So then it would follow that seeing an officer sitting off to the side in his car, whether it be a parking lot or under a shade tree or whatever, it, it, it would be reasonable to assume that that officer could be using that time to fill out his report.
It depends on a report. Most of the reports are done by the computer, but what officers do, they make mental notes. They're, they're sitting there writing notes as to what they're going to put in their, their report, because I want them to spend less time at the police department filling out the report. I don't want them sitting there making notes and doing all things like this. So, uh, and we're also working with an IT person trying to get, so they can actually write the reports in the control cars.
So my point is, when an officer is stationary, he could be doing what he has to do.
Absolutely.
Just to fill out his report.
Absolutely.
It's not because you cannot see him with a tinted window that he's sitting there all in a sleep.
Sleep, absolutely.
So, uh, I think that's a point to bring out to the public, when you see officers parked somewhere, more than likely, they are filling out their reports or communicating or checking in, whatever. Chief, I appreciate your, uh, report and thank you very much. That's my comment.
And there is one other thing. If you see two policemen together, sitting there talking, we have solved so many cases that way. The burglaries at the high, at the First Baptist Church and the school, that was because two officers were sitting there talking about how the building was entered, an accident. That's a big thing for us, how someone gets into a building, how they leave a building, and they determine who the dang person was because they sit there and shared information. So it's very important sometimes that officers get better.
Ms. Smith, last.
I'm, I promise you, I'm not trying to be a comedian, I'm just being me. But one thing about the officer city, what it does for me is check my speed and make me get off the gas.
Did you know I do that when I go down the interstate? See the fruit grove, slow down. It has a pepper on all those.
Okay, Chief, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you to yourself, thank you.
All right, uh, we just finished item number eight. Now we're, uh, moving on to agenda item number nine. This will be your 2021-2022 budget update, second quarter. Jan Smith, our financial officer, will take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What Manny has shown you on the screen is general fund summaries for, uh, the second quarter in the March 1st. And I would like to point you in the direction of this column, you're looking at revenues. Actual year-to-date, uh, 2.1 million, which includes, um, 1.3 million in tax revenue. This not only includes adware taxes, but other taxes that we collect as well, such as sales tax, excise taxes in general. The next column is where I anticipate we will be at the end of the year. I'm going to go through some of these line items. Um, I explain anything that's typically, um, has a budget variance over $1,000, meaning what I'm projecting to be a year-end versus what we budgeted. The first, um, line I'd like to point you to is impact fees. And we didn't budget anything since this was our first year of collection, but so far we have, uh, I'm projecting we will collect about $2,500. And again, this is as of March, so by this time now, this has changed. The next line item I want to point you to is federal grants. As you can see, the budget for the year was only 5,000, but I'm anticipating over $460,000 worth of grant revenue. Wow. That's because we have received our first distribution of the American Rescue Plan Act funds from, uh, the US government. We are using those funds to, uh, enhance our roads and streets and stormwater. We will receive a total of $921,000 by the time everything is said and done. So, um, this is a big, um, uh, increase in revenue for this year because of those unanticipated grant funds. The next line item I want to point you to is this one down here, which is our miscellaneous, and showing a decrease from budget, just about a couple thousand dollars. That's due to refunds for 125 park donations primarily. And people, um, we noticed, everybody who had donated, uh, funds, that we were not going to complete that project and, you know, we asked if we could retain those funds for other park projects or they like a refund. Some people chose a refund, and that's the reason for the decrease in miscellaneous category. So overall, I'm projecting a surplus of about $460,000 on the revenue side, primarily due to those federal grant funds that we received, which I know Troy is anxious to spend in one year. He may achieve it at the rate he's going. So my surplus here could change dramatically if Troy picks up speed. Are there any questions with respect to the revenue side?
Sir?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, you said something regarding our impact fees, that right now we have, you're predicting 2,500?
Yes.
But you said that is no longer the number, is that what I heard?
It could, it could have increased by now, because this is as of March.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought I heard, but I was just making sure. So you're anticipating it to be even higher?
Um, I, I think it will go higher with the development that's going on and, and the fees that we are collecting. Now, next year, um, we'll, we'll go ahead and budget for that, but again, with only one year of collections, our budget is really going to be a little, um...
Conservative.
Conservative, yes.
No, no, I'd rather us do that and then be happy at the end. And then the, um, the grant that you just, the ARPA, ARPA, whatever?
ARPA, yes.
You said it should have about 921,000 total?
Yes.
So when do we have to spend those funds by and when will we receive the total funding?
We should receive our, our other 50% distribution, our other $460,000 around October.
Okay, so next year's budget.
Right. We have to obligate the money, meaning have projects for the money within two years. We have to spend it within four years.
Spend.
Again, Troy has guaranteed us spending a lot quicker with the road projects.
The pop holes.
That are so desperately needed.
Thank you.
Ms. Kenny?
Uh, in regard to the impact fees, uh, some of those impact fees are designated. I think not.
It's all designated for, um, capital.
For capital improvement, but we're not specifically designated for the police department.
For the police department, yes, ma'am. And you'll see that in the next schedule that I'm going to show you. Yes, those monies are taken right away out of our operating account and put into the reserve account that's set aside for the police department. Now, those funds can only be used to increase capacity at the police department for a new officer, not a replacement officer, but a, a, an additional position, police officer position. It can be used to outfit that officer. Or it can be used for the police building. We're building a bigger building, we're increasing capacity. So there are very strict rules with respect to the use of impact fees.
And they are tied to development?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have, uh, two questions, Jan. You said that $900,000 grant that we are getting unexpectedly will be paid over time by Smear answered part of the question, we're going to get half of it in October.
Yes.
Where's the other half?
Oh, and we've already received it. That's what I'm showing up here now, we received.
Okay.
I don't have the date we received it, we received it several months ago.
So Troy, is that part of the money you're using right now for your project?
That, that's, uh, the money I've been putting, we're trying to work towards using on the stormwater issues along Almond Way, Magnolia, Maple, and, um, Oakwood Street. So the Minatresta, uh, Granada area.
So you'll have an infusion of another 450 houses in October, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And one thing, Jan, I want to ask you is throughout the city, particularly in Dunellen Heights, there are a lot of new homes going up. Quite amazed how many are going up.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm quite surprised that our impact fees, we only have $2,500. Is that because they haven't paid their impact fees yet or, because it seems like we should have a lot more than $2,500?
That, I, I'm sorry, I can't answer because I don't know how much it is per, um, new development. I'm not sure what the fee is. I like for just a residential three-bedroom home, I'd have to do a little research to answer that question.
And, and if they pulled the permit last year, then that impact fee would not be applied to this year, correct?
Right.
So that's probably what you're seeing, is they pulled the permit last year, even if they didn't start building until February.
Yeah, so I would anticipate with the current new construction that's going on, that number a year from now should be quite a bit higher, I would think.
It, it could be. If you notice, last year, the first column, we collected $6,930. So that could be part of, as Vice Mayor Henshaw explained, new development that was paid in the prior year. So it could, it could very well be higher, but because this is a new revenue source and development is a little unpredictable, um, I, I'd rather be conservative in my projection and come out higher. I think that's, that's a more...
So Georgina, as far as Dunellen Heights, do you have a ballpark figure how many, uh, permits are currently in the works in Dunellen Heights as far as new construction?
Since I've been here, I know about five.
About five?
That came, that...
There are five homes right now in a various phase of construction, right now.
That were completed.
Yeah, completed, okay.
And there are others, but I can't, I don't have the exact amount.
Okay, thank you, continue, Ms. Smith.
Are there any more questions? All right, now, on to expenses. And here, I'm going to highlight just a few, but we have, can you scroll down a bit? Okay, expenses, we're currently at 1.2 million, almost 1.3 million. I am projecting expenses to end the year at about 4.2 million, with a surplus of 456,000, primarily due to the ARPA grant. That's where that surplus is coming in. If you notice, there's a little bit of an overage in expenses by about $4,100. Now, you have to keep in mind, the budget is constantly a moving target. It will change daily. So based on just standard projections, I'm going to highlight just a few. I'm not trying to pick on you, Andrew, but legal counsel, you'll notice I'm projecting, the budget is 63,000. I'm projecting about 73,000 or 10,000 over budget. But what I want you to keep in mind, we have pass-through expenses that show up on the revenue side. Currently, they're at about $8,000. So if you put the numbers together, there's only about a $2,000 difference. $10,000 overage for expenses, plus the revenue, minus the revenue, that will offset that, and you're about a couple thousand dollars over budget. So we're really right in line with our legal expenses this year. So as long as the dummy major comes along, that Andrew may have to dig deep and spend a lot of time, we should be pretty good this year with respect to legal expenses. The next figure would be the police department. This is the same type of situation where I'm showing about a $13,000 overage. But our police department, on their own time, do special detail that they are paid through the city and we are reimbursed from the agencies that are asking for their help, such as at Blue Run Park, when a police officer is needed on the weekends. So that revenue is recorded up above, but the expense shows in their department. And so right now, that $13,000 is offset by about $4,300 in other hiring agencies. What makes up that $13,000 overage, we have reserve officers that we use. So their salaries, about 5,700. And also the $3,000 that we use for appraisal property of the new police facility that was in Bunchdade. So all told, it's really only about $8,000 over right now as of March, due to that special detail and the reimbursement on the other side that you're not seeing in this line. Another line I want to point out is, if I can find it, Parks and Rec. They're coming in at about $4,500, $4,600 under budget. That's primarily due to a decrease in anticipated utility water and sewer expenses. Overall, bottom line, 456,436 anticipated year-end surplus, give or take a few dollars. Are there any questions on the expense side? Oh, Mandy pulled up the information on the police impact fee. For residential dwelling unit, $315. Non-residential buildings are based on a per-square basis. 14 and a half cents, 36 and a half cents, 19 and a half cents, you know, for the different, very, different non-residential properties. So we're not making a killing. I don't think it's designed to make a killing unless we're really going to have a boom with development. But it is monies that can be used in the future to assist with what it's being collected for.
I would just say that the fee for impacts is more than reasonable. Living in South Florida for many years before I relocated, you would expect another zero on the end of that number if you built a new house. So it's quite amazing.
Citrus County, I think, is going up as of June 1st to $6,500, I believe. So they raised theirs by 1,000.
And we would probably, if we wanted to consider increasing, we would probably need another study, not a formal study, to be able to defend the increase. That's not something that I believe staff could do, maybe Georgina's familiar with doing something like that. There's a lot of data that our consultants required.
Well, Mandy, put that, I think staff should look into that and at least advise counsel what it would take to look at that. Thanks for that.
Okay, that wraps up the presentation for our actuals and our projected year-end. The next thing I want to show you, as I always do, I show you reserves and where we're at. Okay, here are all our reserves. And the column that you really want to look at is this column, which is as of March 31st. These are all our restricted and unrestricted reserves for various reasons. Line, where my line numbers look like they're completely off. I apologize for that. General fund unrestricted. This is our checkbook. Money flows in and out of this daily, monthly, weekly, and this is, and we're sitting at almost 1.5 million right now. And that includes all our ad-horn collections so far. So that's going to most likely decrease by the end of the year. Let's see, what else do we have? We've got various capital reserves, we've got designated capital replacement, we've got a capital replacement reserve from gas tax money. Police reserves are restricted for police activities. Our emergency reserve is right here, $682,000. This will be revisited at budget time to make sure we have at least, I have to look at our document, but I believe it's four months' worth of operating expenditures we want to have on hand here in case there is a declared disaster we can tap into prior to any reimbursement from an insurance company or if something has to be replaced, such as, and I don't want to jinx anything, but if all our computers go down and we would have to suddenly replace them all, that's where we would get the money from, at least on a temporary basis, to cover that. We also have our debt service reserve, we are paying the revenue bond that Mr. Powell mentioned, that we're paying at $175,000 a year. The balance as of March is $1.8 million, $1.8 million. I do want to make a note that we have to date by the end of the year, we will have paid off $1.4 million of that debt.
Wow.
So we're definitely chipping away at a no-interest loan that we are able to fund each year. So that's a positive, that it's not a total hardship on us to have to fund that and pay it off. Because if we don't ever want to default on this, the city could not afford to do that. So all told, total cash in bank, $6.47 million in the various reserves. And one thing I want to mention too, with the police facility, with the one-cent sales tax that's set aside this year, as well as the proceeds from the sale, if council has not decided on what to do with that, I'm proposing we do a resolution to set that money aside in another reserve so that we know where that money came from. And if a portion of it would need to be, need to go back into the reserve it came from, you know exactly where that money needs to go. Because part of that is sales tax money, one-cent sales tax money. That can only be used for police or roads and streets. So we don't want that just deposited into an unrestricted reserve to be used for any purpose, it can't be.
So when you do that, you're following the capital element of the comprehensive plan that says you have to report every five years, is that any part of what you're doing?
No, I didn't know there was reporting that needed to be done every five years.
Well, I'm not sure either. But I do know, and I haven't looked at the capital element for a long time, but I would be interested in that.
Let me make a note of that and see, because I've been here going on 18 years, and I've never reported. Now, I report quarterly on our capital monies that we have.
Give it a look.
Yes.
So Jen, just let me make sure I understand that. Basically, what you're asking us is we'll have to do a resolution, correct?
That's what I'm proposing, because at least that documents where that money came from.
And then we can't...
And what it's used for.
Right, and then that means we can't use it to paint the roads purple?
No.
Okay, it's a restricted fund.
Well, I don't want to say that if you unresolute some of that money.
Well, we can unresolute, okay.
You could use it to paint the roads.
Yeah.
Only a portion of it though. Actually, any of it, since it's all for roads and streets, but painting roads is not capital, so... But it's just, it documents where it came from. And if for some reason, the building doesn't come to pass, the new facility, it goes back to where it belongs.
So how long would that take to do, since we're about to get funds?
Oh, with the resolution, next meeting, you know, once we get the proceeds from the sale, then we'll present the resolution in its entirety. But we still have that $365,000 that's sitting in the one-cent sales tax. It's still sitting there, it's not going to be spent on anything else. So really, the resolution would need to be in place, I would say, by October 1st.
So can we put that on the workshop to look at it?
Okay, but let me ask, let me ask a question. So the resolution would earmark and make it definitive that this money would go specifically to the police building?
It would. And then, like I said, if it doesn't come to pass, then $365,000 of it still needs to go for roads and streets or police activities. The other, the sale proceeds from the church, that can be used for any purpose, any government.
So right now, without the resolution, the money can go for the police or roads, correct?
Sure, or the sale, or the sale money could go for general, painting the building.
Right, it could go for carpeting of the building.
So one of the things that I proposed at the workshop is that we cap our contribution, not to increase or comp, right now, council has not approved that. So to rehash that, we have approximately $700,000 between what we're going to retrieve from the sale of the Soul Heart Church and the $365,000 that's been... So right now, we have $700,000 of city funds sitting for the police building.
Yes, sir.
My concept now is that's capped. We try to buy a piece of property and reserve it for the police building, and then try to find funding, whether through grants or state funding. So right now, earmarking additional money above the 365 and with the 350 that we're going to retrieve, you're talking about something in addition to that?
No, no, sir, I'm not talking additional. I'm talking the 365 plus the proceeds from the sale of the church. Your cap, if the proceeds are 325,000, it's just those two amounts would be detailed in the resolution. I'm not increasing anything.
Okay.
I'm just identifying, that's all this resolution is.
So I think it's pretty clear to council where this money is supposed to go. So I'm just trying to understand why it's important to you to put it in the resolution.
It's important because if the building, if the building doesn't come to pass, if we don't do anything with the police department, we've got this money sitting in a resolution. Other councils can say, we have $700,000 sitting in this reserve, what's it for? If I'm not here, if other people aren't here to explain it, you can just say, oh, let's just spend it on carpeting for the building. When legally, you can't spend $365,000 on carpeting this building because it came from one-cent sales tax.
Okay, let me just follow through. So let's say we have the $700,000, and it's earmarked for the police station, which we do. And then we do apply for grants to try to cover the potential difference, and we hit a bonanza. We get a grant that basically covers the whole thing. Could happen.
Sure.
Right? So we would have to undo the resolution because we don't need that entire amount.
That's correct.
That's easy.
So the question, so it's kind of, you're creating a resolution that just identifies with a resolution that can be unwound. If council, at their choice and wisdom, wants to unwind it.
Correct, and identifies legally what that money can be used for.
But it's not binding like in concrete, it can be used for roads or the police station.
Or the police money, but it can't be used for parking wreck, it can't be used for general...
We already know that, though, without the resolution.
I know you know that.
And not the 325 part.
But other people, if none of us were here, I'm trying to protect the money and keep it legal, is what is my purpose. If you don't want to do that, you don't have to. I'm just proposing it as a safeguard for us to use that money in its legal capacity. Because that sales tax money was adopted by an ordinance through Marion County that must be used only for police or roads and street capital, not operating, no salaries or anything like that. So I'm really trying to keep it all legal.
And if I can, we had an excellent example of this, and Troy, I think you were on the fire department. We owned the, where the old middle school used to be, where the vegetable stand is now. We purchased it from the school board for a dollar, $1. We turned around and sold it for...
$1.4 million.
Thank you. That money was supposed to go to specifically the new fire department and police. However, the money that we had, and I was on city council, they spent it on other things. So if they had put it, just like Jan had said, into a resolution, and we also did that when we got rid of the trash services that we had, those funds were supposed to go to the fire department.
That made a part of that reserve as well.
And it got used for something else.
But that money could legally be used for other things.
Right, but if we had put it away, like we had said we were going to...
You need to spend in the account.
Yeah, and then instead of just spending it, so it's like not paying your mortgage payment.
See, my main concern is that one-cent sales tax money, that it gets spent on what Marion County's ordinance mandates that it be spent for, police or roads and streets. The church money, that came from another reserve, which is a capital reserve, but council can use to spend the proceeds money on anything you can...
So let me just ask Andrew opinion. To me, this is pretty innocuous. Almost like a statement of what the money, what this council thinks the money should be spent for. So is there any pros or cons to doing this?
I think from a legal standpoint, I, there's really not much legal advice to give. give. I think staff is, you've heard what their goals are, and so that's, staff stating as far as what council decides to do, you have several decisions that you can make, and they're not really legally impacted, because you could change your mind in the future. It just depends on the flexibility that you want now versus the message you want to send going forward in the future.
I got you. I under, I totally understand. So this council, as it currently sits, could change its mind, or after the elections, a different council could change its mind, just as we did with the 125 part.
Yes.
Could change their mind how we wanted that. Rather than going to that park, that money now is being earmarked to go into the restroom. So I get it.
Put it on the workshop for Wednesday, for next Wednesday?
Yeah, I get it. Okay, Jen, continue.
And that really concludes my presentation.
And for?
Okay, excellent. Any comments or questions? Very good, all right. Now we're moving, I believe, to item number 10, which is the agreement. 2022-18 Kimble Lee Horn IPO 102, Dano Stormwater Need Analysis. Before we accept public comment, can we just have a, just a brief summary, just break what this is, Mandy? So if public wants to comment, they know what this is.
Good evening, council. This is one of, one of the many challenges I run into day to day behind my desk. This year, we received notice through the state, as a result of a new requirement to report a 20-year stormwater needs analysis for the city's stormwater assets. We have to report that to the county. The county will combine all that information from each of the cities within the county and relay it to the state. The new state statute was passed, I want to say passed, and became active this past December. So something that occurred after the budget process in October that we did not see coming. We just received notice about this requirement, I want to say less than 30 days ago, 30, 45 days ago, we received notice about this reporting requirement. Looking through the data that it requires us to submit to the county by the end of June, it is a full detailed description of the assets, the condition of the assets, the, the mileage or linear feet of pulver pipes and underground utilities for the stormwater components, and a 20-year plan as to what we plan on doing or need to do to bring that, bring it up to standards for the new requirements coming out in the future. So to help you maybe a little better understanding of this, is for the last three and a half years, we've been working with the engineers and with Swift Mud, with the grant that we received, we're paying a portion of it, Swift Mud's paying some, to identify our assets and to identify some of the upgrades needed in our stormwater. So this report will take that information, along with much more information, put it all together in one master report that goes to the state. The state gets a better idea of where we are.
Okay, let's keep it at that, and then you can speak again if, as need be. All right, you had a basic summary by Troy on what item number 10 is. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment on item number Anybody signed up for Zoom or anything? Okay, no public comment on item number 10. Troy, is there anything you would like to add before council makes a move?
Yes, I will mention briefly that dealing with Tim Lee Horn and getting the IPO together for this contract, we were able to identify majority of the information that we could sit down together, compile, and reducing the overall cost of getting this report completed and submitted in a timely manner. So right now, I believe the contract says that it will not or shall not exceed $8,000. So we're hoping to stay on track and keep it less than that if possible.
Is this analysis for the entire city?
Yes, sir.
And would it be correct to say that this analysis would be needed normally if we apply for any other grants? They usually want this kind of work done, so this would be something that would be expected to be done?
It will certainly help, yes, because it's a much more detailed description of the condition and the status of the city's stormwater components. And if you don't mind, I'll give you a brief description of some of the work that they plan to do and the data collection and evaluation. Plan, project timelines and costs, identifying the areas of needing improvements, stormwater infrastructures information in a GIS formatting, description of the stormwater management system, current stormwater program activities, and any prior stormwater master plans or asset management information. So annually, we do, or well, now we're on a three-year basis, but annually, we used to do a MS4 reporting, and then we did the BMAP reporting, best management practices for our stormwater. Now we're doing the asset mapping and identifications. This pulls all of that together and creates a 20-year master plan.
Okay?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, council, first we need a motion and a second, and we can have discussion. We have a motion for...
I'm in.
This would be item number 10. We have a second?
A second.
Just any seconds? Any council discussion on this? Asking for $8,000 to do a study to study the entire stormwater system within the city of Dano. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Okay, we move to item number 11, council discussion of the police facility site. Again, compliments to Georgina, your, what you laid on council with all your information. I reviewed it. There's a lot more to it. You know, when you first present it, you're trying to absorb it in real time, and once you have it in your hands, you can kind of slow it down.
True.
A lot of the things you did, you didn't look it up in an encyclopedia and someone knew you the answer, right? So what, what you did is gave us seven, was it seven potential sites? Eight?
Six.
Six potential sites. You gave us the pluses, the minuses, the expenses and whatever. And now council is going to try to winnow that down and look at what our preferred site is. Certainly like to hear from chief. And once we have winnowed it down, we would then ask you, I'm sure, to really dig in and make sure it fulfills everything we're needing. You know, for instance, does it really need water retention? And if it does need water retention, does that impact the parking? You know, things like that, you know? So we'll just, this is open, open discussion. Hopefully, council has, again, looked at what Georgina presented to us and has some ideas where we want to go with this. Ms. Cabbage, do you have any comment?
Other than what I mentioned on Wednesday, just short and sweet of it, is the price of the lot on Powell Road, $85,000, and the fact that, that Powell Road in itself is going to be designated as a, a truck route that's coming down, coming down from FDOT. I just think that if we're going to be responsible keepers of our funding for this city, then we need to go the most fiscal responsible way. And that, that lot does meet the requirements as far as locations in respect that it is placed between two thruways, and that being 41 and Williams Street. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Ms. Kenny?
Well, I don't see anything wrong with our discussion up to this point, but I think the power and the plan of the, of our city government is that we give some of these decisions over, some of our suggestions possibly, over to not only our department head in community planning, but also to the planning commission. And the planning commission, that is, that they would be able to do the real research to come back and advise us. And then at that point, we could make a decision. But with the planning commission having the opportunity to advise us, they would also be able to bring in the public, because you will have people who will be affected and who will have, have quasi judicial opportunities in order to defend their point of view, and that should be taken into consideration. So that we bring in the public element, and I think the first person to bring this to our attention was the chair of the planning commission. She is concerned, I believe, or at least she expressed concern, that whatever decision comes, we have to have the agreement of the city behind us to be successful. And I totally agree with that.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Powell Road, the empty lot.
Vice Mayor?
Um, you know, if, if looking at financially, yes, Powell Road. I definitely think that the citizens, I mean, A, I can't think of a subject that we have not talked about more than this. We've mentioned Powell Road six months, three months ago, and it's been reported in the newspaper. And again, I totally understand that once we've kind of put our thoughts around a area, maybe during our due diligence period, because, let me back up. This is the one thing. Those vacant lands, won't stay vacant and available for six months from now or three months from now. I know that for a fact. So saying that, I think if we, as a council, can think, okay, this is where we would propose to purchase, I think during our due diligence period of 30 to 45 days, which is pretty sort of normal, that that's when we can have a special workshop, maybe the planning and zoning can have a special, or maybe even doing a joint planning and zoning and city council workshop together to discuss Powell Road, if that's what this council were to vote on. And then, that way, we are getting and putting it during that 30 to 45-day due diligence period, we find out that the citizens can't ever agree on anything that we say.
That's a real situation.
Then, then, you know, we can either go forward, or we can take it, you know, we can get out of our due diligence period and be done. But to keep just delaying and putting enough, I mean, we have, we have definitely given this subject more discussion than probably any other subject in the city's history.
Hallelujah.
And I've been on enough city councils to affirm until they say this.
And there's going to be some money spent anywhere.
Yeah, thank you. I, I do disagree at one point, and that is, there was a great amount of discussion when we determined, the city determined, that they wanted to do something with the fire department. Maybe remember that. They sent out, they had special meetings, they sent out literature with the utilities. We had numerous opportunities for the, for the public to express themselves, and we also had the, the full, I think, support in the end of the decision that was made. It was a very difficult decision, and there was a lot of people who did not like the way that decision went, but the public participated, and that was because it was a capital, a capital project. And the police department, when we're talking what it's going to be in the end, is a capital project. So I think that we always should be based first on public opinion. I think we should advertise that we are having a meeting for this particular issue, and I think we should hear from the planning commission. Otherwise, what is the purpose of a planning commission?
Well...
All right, go ahead.
I mean, and I get it, because, but I guess I'm having a hard decision with...
We always will have the last word.
No, I know, that, that's not what I'm concerned about, but it's kind of like, are we putting the chicken before the egg or the egg before the chicken? Because do we have to have the plan? I mean, I, I get that we need the planning and zoning to do certain things with the properties, but until we can actually put it forward to them, I, I don't know why they're having to approve or to make a recommendation, to make the recommendation to us, because most of those people sit in this audience now, and I mean, I think we, that listen to it.
The whole purpose of the comprehensive plan and the future, and the, and the future planning use, is to put things together in a way that they design and will be most beneficial for the future growth as anticipated at the city. There does take a little bit of expertise and study to know what pla, what plaques we're looking at, and to hear from them as to what they would recommend.
I just think that, I think if we give them something to look at instead of them, I, I, I think we're doing, we want the same thing. We want their opinion, we want their expertise, you know, their advice, but I think, I'm just saying, let's give them something, and you're saying, let's have them give it to us. So I, I think we're just doing it...
They're giving us the recommendation, they're giving us the background.
And I'm saying, we're giving them a recommendation to look at, but we're just doing it backward. You walk forward, I walk backward.
Okay, let, let me make a comment, and we'll talk a little bit more about this. I think all the comments that have been made, I just ate a piece of chocolate with a peanut in it.
That's what the council...
Not, not a good thing to do. I, I think we're all, the comments that have been made, all can be combined to the satisfaction of everyone. Vice Mayor is correct, it is a piece of property that's sitting there, the Powell property, is sitting there on the open market. You can't presume that it's still going to be for sale a week from now, 30 days from now, a month from now. You can't presume it's just going to sit there. Also, to Ms. Kenny's point, we need to do due diligence. We need to have public input. We need to allow Georgina to look at the plans that we, chief is proposing, and make sure that that building can fit on that lot and give us the parking it needs, along with the possibility you could have water retention areas. So I, I think a combination is, is to put all these ideas together, where we direct staff to a specific piece of property, put within the due diligence period enough time to satisfy Ms. Kenny's ideas, and then let staff come back to us with a recommendation. So in other words, the church property, they tied that up quite a while ago while they did their due diligence. How long, how long were they in the due diligence period, Mandy?
The, the people now?
Yeah.
They only had 30 days? 30 days.
But that's whatever you agreed to. So if, I think if the sellers of that property, you're dealing with a city, you're not dealing with, you know, some land speculator. If, if they really felt the city was sincere, but yet the city needed time to do its due diligence, I would be very surprised if a seller would not work with the city contractually and give us the time we need to do it. and give us the time we need to do our due diligence. So what I, what I would think that we need to direct staff where we want them to put their energy so they can make a recommendation to us and also construct some sort of contract that gives us the time and opportunity to do what we need to do. Yes?
Well, I would agree with that if you included all the properties. You can't, you just can't expect...
Already done that.
No, the planning commission has not. They don't, there are different opinions in terms of zoning and what would be the future development of the city that would be the expertise of the planning commission. So why not let them look at them and make a comparison and come back and give us a recommendation? Not everybody needs to agree.
You know, I think that's a great idea except for one thing. Just look at the money, okay? We just had Jan Smith go through our budget and what our reserves are, and we talked about possibilities of emergencies and so on. And we know with the price tags on those other properties, why waste our money? Eighty-five thousand out there, and somebody's going to snatch it up, okay? And then consider this, that police department property is not going to be given away, okay? We're going to have to figure a price tag on it, okay? And that's going to be another taxable property if somebody puts a family restaurant on it or whatever. So I'd say, we have done our due diligence. Let's start talking about, as Bill said, some kind of contractual agreement that we asked our city planner to go ahead and define to cover the details of the appropriateness of the slot.
I do, I have the right to.
Yes, just shoot it.
I do think that when we're talking about the future and how much money it's going to cost us, we need to speak also to the fact that some of the properties we are looking at are appropriately zoned. Some of the properties are not. Those properties that are not appropriately zoned, how will be one of them, means that we are going to be doing, in our CRA this year, we will be changing the zoning of that particular parcel. When you bring forth right, like, and inconsistency, which is that's what's happening where it's not consistent with the properties around it, then what is the purpose of talking about planning development? Those are the kind of questions that should be turned over to the planning commissions.
If we may, Chief, you've had the opportunity to look at Georgina's work, correct?
Uh-huh.
Would you please come up here and give us your assessment of what would work in your mind?
And Chief, can I just say something real quick? We're on Powell Road, and I get it, you know, there are homes there. However, there are also, I mean, CBS is barely a block away. And then directly across the street from Powell Road is the daycare center. Then there's another daycare center two doors away from that. And then three doors away from that is the beauty shop. And then next door to that is what was the Sonic Lodge. So that road is already commercial in intent. And there's a tax place that...
If you're on the planning commission, whatever, you're not, not, that's not the way to think.
And four years from now, I'll let you know.
Good.
Chief, before you get started, to me, the three properties that have the most viability is the Powell Road property, Gary's Carpet, and the service station that's on the other side of you. The Powell Road property is clean. It's a level, empty lot that needs no maintenance whatsoever. It can sit there until we're ready to do what we need to do. You're currently in a building, and on both sides of you, both sides of you is land and buildings that are for sale. So you could actually keep your site, double the amount of land, decide what we want to tear down, what we want to rebuild and use extra parking. So to me, it's, it's a very interesting... I think all of these have positive ideas. There is a difference in price, probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference. But if we are going to apply for grants, and if we are going to apply for state funding, there's a possibility that that could be picked up through that vehicle too, rather than straight out of the city coffers. So just, you looked at it. Tell us what you think.
Well, I want to start off saying, thank you for finally asking me. In two years, this is the first time I've been asked to come up here and speak. So I appreciate that. And it's looking at the building, saying, well, I think I'm correct. All of them have to be rezoned. Am I correct? So it's just not the Powell property. It's all of them. So in looking at that now, if you take each and every one of them, to me, the best buck for our money and the biggest savings is the Powell property. It is, as we said, it's vacant land. It's right away, whenever we get ready to build, it's already there. And I'm sure that we will do our due diligence to see if the one lot would be big enough for the building and water retention. That's the only thing that really bothers me, is it big enough for that? But it wouldn't take much to find that out. And if it is, even if we have to buy both lots, you're still the cheapest place we've gotten out, and it still has to be tore down. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it still has to be tore down, redid, rezoned. So my opinion, the Powell property, on Powell Road.
Oh, let me ask, Chief. So the sink, there's two lots there, one of them is listed, one of them possibly.
Yes, sir.
So the assumption we're making is since both lots are the same size and owned within the family, the assumption we're making that there's possibility that if we needed the second lot for reasons...
It could possibly be available.
And it could be possibly bought for a similar price.
Yes, sir.
So if you added those two up, if we had to go that route, it's one route, it'd be one seventy. And all the other properties that are for sale aren't at that number. Plus, they would include demolition.
To demolish them.
So there's, even if you had to go the most expensive route, which means two, I mean, the expensive route, which is buying both lots, it would still be possibly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars cheaper than buying those buildings.
And the only thing that bothers me about the station is once they bring a bulldozer or a piece of equipment in there and disturb it, have all this period of time have they disposed of their oil and stuff in a proper manner? Because if they find anything that's contaminated, it is bad, bad, bad. So I don't even want to get into the contaminated of this station. And I'm not saying it is. I'm not saying it's not.
She had a report for it that said that it was in good condition.
Did it? Okay. I did not see that. So then it's bad. But the Powell property to me is the best. It's easy access to forty-one, easy access to anyplace else we go. And it's the best for the city, and the less money for the city, and it's the best property for the city.
I'd like to make a comment, please. I'd like to make a comment there.
Yes.
I was not a math major, not in college. And I really do well in math in high school either. But I can count to five. One, two, three, four, five council people are sitting here. We already have three people that agree, and Bill, you're sitting on the fence. Let's get this done.
I mean, when you point me out, I have to respond.
I'm just saying. I'm saying we made a decision on this because that property is not going to be for sale forever.
I'm not on the fence. I'm ready to make a decision.
Let's make a decision then.
As my, as the mayor, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do.
And I think you've done it really well, and it's time to move on, sir.
Yeah, let's, while we're on this, Brenda, would you, do you want to make a comment?
She says so sweetly.
If I can interject real quick. I don't know if you guys noticed, but the square footage on the properties, that the Powell property is the second largest.
Yes.
It's thirty-two thousand square feet. The properties next to the police station, when you add them up with the police station, the two scenarios, either Gary's Carpet with the police station or the police station with a service station, they add up to twenty thousand, twenty-four thousand square feet. They're smaller than the Powell property.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's another person who can do the math.
She used her toes.
Okay, Ms. Scobage, let's...
Brenda Jarville, one-one-six-six-one, Camp Pride. I know several of you really like horses. So right now, I feel like Rich Strike, an eighty-to-one long shot in a derby. My concern is, we have not included the community input from this. I also realize the sensitive time element that you have for the Powell property. Powell property, yes, that's a lot, but it can have other uses besides the police station. There's been a lot of talk in community development center, dog park, and so forth. I've driven by a Powell property every day in the last several weeks. I still am struggling with that because I think it's very important as our community grows that we have the most visible section in town for our police station. And at some point, yes, Powell Road will have more traffic. I don't think in the next twenty-five, fifty, twenty-five to fifty years, which is the time element of the decision you're trying to make, will compete with forty-one. So that's just a personal opinion, just like all of you have a personal opinion. But I still say, you had a presentation, a workshop. You're discussing this now at a meeting, but the community, the stakeholders, have still not had their say. So if you want to compromise on that, want to buy the lot, go for whatever future use. But I think it would be not very responsible to make that final decision and say, we're buying the lot, and that's where the police station will go. Because you're not including the community on it. So that's all I have to say. I don't know if I made it the winning statement or not. It wasn't any long shot.
Pardon? Cassie, a quick question. Sorry, I'm so used to going by your first name. I'm very respectful. Well, I mean, what do you think that if we speak under contract and we're doing our due diligence, if we brought you, the planning and zoning, the city council, and invited the...
Well, we're going to have to make some efforts, whether it's working with our business chamber, going to some of our community associations that we have to get the word out. If you want to have your input, this is the time to give input. But you don't want what happened with the last council, Soul's Harbor Church and so forth. You ran on that campaign about transparency, public inclusion. So I would ask you to follow those principles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Well, I certainly agree. Ms. Scobage, I might have to internalize your comments, and I'm still working on that. What I'm suggesting is if we want to move forward on the Powell property, contractually, we can put the time element in the contract that allows us to do all the things everybody's asking us to do. You know, ask them for sixty days, and within sixty days, the planning commission and Georgina and everybody's involved with this has to look at and come back with us, to us with a recommendation. It's if the sellers agree to this and allow us to have the time to have an additional meeting or to have public input, to advertise it, I think it covers all the bases if we do it that way. So that's, my recommendation would be to try to make an offer with the timeframes in it that allows us to do the due diligence that's being discussed. That would be my recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to hear a motion for me. Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay.
That was what I was going to say.
Mr. Kiefer?
Maybe Dr. Matt at the twenty years. I'm still Scott Kiefer. I still live at nine zero seven five North Cedar Cove Road. I am also a real estate broker. I believe the city needs to put this property under contract as soon as possible with a sixty-day due diligence period. I will also offer my real estate brokerage services free of charge to the city to make sure this gets taken care of properly. I don't think you want to wait on this. Property is selling around here, although Don Ellen hasn't hit as much as a lot of them are. It is definitely moving in this area, and it's not slowing down anytime soon. So I do hereby give that offer to handle that for the city free of charge on my end. And no commission will even be collected on the sale of the property.
What would your, what would your services be?
That'd be writing the contract for the city, may follow it through the due diligence period. If a commission's paid, I'll donate it back to the city.
Is that, and thank you, by the way, that is very generous. Is that legal, sir? I know he can write a contract, but can he give his monies back to us? And is that allowed? Are we allowed, oh, real estate?
Free of charge?
They're going to pay somebody a commission on it because there's a commission offered in the MLS.
Yeah.
So if it comes back to me, I have no issue with donating it back to the city. I can give credit towards closing cost of it or towards the purchase price. It just all has to be disclosed.
Yeah, we can, we can add that in once we decide what we want to do, you know.
But I wouldn't wait on this. I think you have to make a decision and do the due diligence period, which would include all of your research time, your public hearing, any of that is included in due diligence.
Okay, that's, okay. I was just, I was just making sure we weren't going over some kind of imaginary, I think it's a six percent commission, I remember, so it's twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So is that, we don't have to bid out our realtor or anything like that, correct? Sorry, Ms. Kenny, I just wanted to make sure we do it, do my questions before we get in trouble.
We're buying rather than selling, I think.
Right, I know, but I'm just making sure we're good to go that way.
Okay, Mr. Kiefer, thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to make a comment? Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Art Jones, one-two-one-six-three, I'm out of way, Don Ellen here. Yeah, I've been in on the police discussion for quite a while with you guys. And I'm so glad you asked the police chief, you know. I could see he was really happy about that. And so that's a good thing. So that's a positive. You're not deciding on a piece of property that he doesn't want. So that's a real positive to give them that respect. And it sounds like a vacant lot. If it's got to be built new, a vacant lot is a lot easier than trying to tear down Gary's Carpet building or something like that. So I'll leave it up to you, but it sounds good that you want to put it under contract and do your due diligence and move ahead.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, council, when you make a motion, please consider that we don't know for sure, we don't know for sure if the one lot is going to do, we think it will. There's a possibility of that second lot too, so think about that.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we have, we take Mr. Kiefer up on his professional... Okay, I'll make a motion that we have, we take Mr. Kiefer up on his professional offer to write a contract for the property located at Powell Road, and my apologies, I don't have the exact address, in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, with a sixty-days' due diligence from the effective date. We will put down five thousand dollars earnest funds. That is refundable during that specific period. We will have a joint meeting with planning and zoning, city, and the residents once the contract has been accepted. And we will close within ninety to one hundred and twenty days. Is there anything else I should add, sir?
Sounds to me like it covers all.
Well, I, I understand the, the offer being taken up, but essentially the city's utilizing services and so forth, and I don't know how that arrangement would look, or ensure the city receives whatever benefit of that bargain. I know in, is up, is a premise that's simple, but I'm not quite sure where the city wants to go to, to contractually deal with that issue.
Well, we don't usually, I mean, I'm looking at it from a realtor's side, we don't usually go into it contractually, because we, the city, are not paying him the commission. He is with a, he is getting a contractual with the listing agent.
Understood, in this case, typically, it's an arms-length transaction, however, where you have, if the city's utilizing an agent, that agent is compensated and keeps those loans, and if there's another agent, then it's split, all right? Depending on, it may be different for commercial properties than residential sometimes. However, that's typically the case, but in this case, you have a situation that there's talk of money being then donated to the city, and so I just, I don't know how you wish to ensure that that, if, if that's what the goal is.
Okay, so on top of my motion, we will allow Mr. Kiefer to donate his portion of the commission to closing costs. Will that work? For the city's closing costs? That could be surveys, that could be...
You, you could allow that, but there's no, in, not stating in any case, you know, that there's any inclination or anything of, trust me, there's not anything else, but that there's no guarantee to the city without some sort of guarantee in writing that those loans are actually going to come back. It's, it's essentially a gentleman's agreement.
We can have that in the amendment, actually, that would have to be in the additional terms of the contract, that all parties know that those funds are being provided back to the buyer.
And that's, that's just my question, does something need to be part of that contract, or something else?
It'll be part of the contract, additional terms.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Yes. I had that thought. So that was my motion, do you get it, Andy?
I think so. God bless you, Josh.
And we have a second.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion, I vice mayor, a second by Councilwoman Cabbage, any further discussion?
Do you have a question, Ms. Williams?
Well, I was just thinking, I'm just thinking of the public input, and how there was a group that did this survey, and all these people supposedly gave their input on the police department, and I wonder how many of them showed up here to make a comment, that's all.
Okay. My only comment before we bring this to a vote is I really, really think that this covers all the concerns. It locks up the property if they accept for the period of time that we need to do public input, have the planning commission look at it, have recommendations, vet it out. There's no downside to this, if the sellers agree to these terms, we have that entire sixty-day period to answer these questions, and if we don't find the answers to our satisfaction, we just say, "No deal." So I think this covers everything, I, I, I do not see any bear trap in this with the city whatsoever, if the sellers will agree to this. That's my comments, any additional comments?
Yes, just a question, the sixty-day period, would that run from today?
No, so that'd be from the effective date. That's when the last party signs the contract.
Understood.
Yeah.
However, part of, one of the things to consider would be, on those dates, when you would like things to run and so forth, so you don't run afoul of meeting dates, or to allow that flexibility. Because in this situation, typically, when you have this type of a contract or an offer, it's going to come back to council for review, and so there are certain things that are being dictated here into the contract, which presumably I'll review as well, but when council's making an offer, you know, it would be best for council to actually see the offer, that also impacts the dates and so forth. I'm just proposing that you may want to have a special meeting to review the offer before it goes out, once it's been vetted by staff and received from the broker. Otherwise, you know, you just may wish to allow yourself some additional flexibility regarding dates and so forth, rather than an effective date that, you know, is based on signage.
Can't I call a special, special meeting?
Yes.
All right.
Just to let you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm leaving town on the twenty-seventh.
And that's when I'm going to call the meeting.
Right, you go for it. I'll be back in a little bit.
We'll get so much done that you don't want done. Okay, if half has it figured out, basically, the concept is to offer eighty-five thousand for the lot, give it sixty-day due diligence, and outside the contract, you know, if we need to meet again in short order, whatever, when we have to, a five-day's notice, Andy?
Seven.
Seven? Yeah, we'll do it, so everybody...
If you were to meet two weeks from now, on the twenty-third, we could publish an agenda next Monday on the sixteenth for a special meeting on the twenty-third. So I will amend my, I will amend my motion to include that the effective date will not take place, will not start until June, what'd you just say? Or May, May, what day did you just say, the twenty-third? Twenty-third would be the special meeting. That our effective date will not start until May twenty-third. I make that, is that something you can agree to, Ms. Cabbage, second?
Yeah, my surgery's May thirty-first, so get it done.
Okay.
I'll be on a horse that way.
So we have a, an amendment, is there an amendment to the motion? Do we again need to have a, a vote to the amended motion and a second, or are we good?
Uh, I need a second for the amended motion. Ms. Cabbage did.
Ms. Cabbage, you going to second the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay, now you need a better...
All right, that does open us up again for possible, does that open us again for public comment?
Okay.
Because we have an amended motion, correct?
You can reopen it.
Can, or we have to?
Uh, since it's, it's just amendment to the motion, and it's been discussed, you don't have to. But it's, you can't...
I don't think anybody has a problem with that. Okay, any further discussion?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The special council meeting is going to be on the twenty-third, I'm assuming it's going to be in the evening. It's going to be in the evening.
We usually for consistency try to make that...
Okay, so I think we need to make the effective date the twenty-fourth then, so I have time to actually get it signed by...
Well, you can have it signed, but the effective date won't take place until the twenty-third.
Until it's approved here. Because it's got to be approved here before it becomes effective, and I have to have time to get it over to the other agent.
Lose your day?
You're...
So I, I can amend my dates on the twenty-fourth.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Twenty-fourth of this.
The day the week is set.
That's a day, Tuesday, but we're still having a meeting on the twenty-third to discuss the effective on the twenty-fourth, if they accept it.
Okay, got it.
And he can still send it over and have, which is what we recommend.
Okay, it's time for a vote.
The subject. It's going to be an interesting rate. Hour is insane, now, insane?
Oh, goodness.
The council's... The council's interested in moving forward in the financial direction. We're going to hold off on the resolution until we get further on in the budget process, and we see, you know, we're in this all week.
Yes, ma'am.
If that's, if that's okay.
We can still discuss it though in June.
Sure.
That way we'll all be on top of it and be ready. Hey, Mr. Mayor, I know you said on the twenty-third, we usually try and do our five-thirty meeting. We just keep it to like one, like, you know, maybe do it at five, not add on little things?
Vice mayor, you just never know.
I may want to add some too.
Yeah, you just, you just never know what might pop up, but...
You know what I mean.
Yeah.
Respectfully, so I'm going to be trying to pack that week.
I have no problem with that.
I got meetings, can we do it at five?
Okay. We have the motion out there by amended motion by Vice Mayor Hanchar, seconded by Councilwoman Cabbage. We've had extended discussion by council. We've had extended input by our attendees, so we are now ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Surprised.
Passes four-one. Okay, now we are going to number twelve, the presentation of the proposed River Restoration Project, Councilwoman, and I think this is in response to Mr. Jones's idea?
Yes, there's a PowerPoint presentation that Mandy's going to put up on the screen. I'd just like to say, make it clear that we know there are huge problems with the Rainbow River, okay, and that this proposed project of trying to suction muck out, um... Let's put it this way, the title of, of my presentation is, "There's some holes in this boat, but someday it might float." Okay, so there's many, many problems, it's a very, very complex situation. And if you're going to go in and start a huge project, there's certain protocols that must be done, and this particular river is not the Homosassa River, it is not the Kings Bay, and I'm going to explain to you why the permitting process is going to be very difficult and so on, okay? My go-to expert was Jeff Sowers, I've known Jeff for about eighteen years, he's the Rainbow River Aquatic Reserve Manager, along the Akawaha River that he also manages. He is a DEP Environmental Senior Scientist, and he has made these comments, okay? So when I first listened to Arts Project, I had a bunch of stuff going around my head, and largely about the permitting process, and where my experience is, is not with environmental projects, but actually, I, I used to work during the summers for Gulf Archaeology Research Institute. All of our contracts were with the state, we did Ohio State Park Project and so on. Fort King Site, which is National Historic Site now, started with a survey, then a grant, and da-da-da-da-da. So I have some background, knew about some of the permitting process. And right away, Jeff Sowers said to me, "The complexity of permitting would involve all of the above, homeowners of the Rainbow River, several agencies, both state and federal." Okay, the state agencies would be Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, SWIFT, Mud, Florida DEP, and because our river is an outstanding waterway, is recognized by, on a national scale, we'd have to actually work with National DEP, Partner Environmental, uh, Partner Environmental Protection. Uh, next slide? Okay, so there's going to have to be, after a permitting process, it's going to have to be impact studies, including project, projects impact on aquatic life, micro, meaning very tiny, and macroorganisms, and predictions of bottom disturbances of all submerged vegetation vegetation, as this suctioning dredging process is not a selective excavation process, okay? And Jeff and I both like conceded that the Rainbow River is going to be a very problematic, problematic suction dredging process because, as opposed to the Homosassa River and Kings Bay, which has a tidal current, which took all of the disturbed muck downstream and into the Gulf. You have to understand this process of suctioning, muck, muck is not like suctioning your living room. As soon as they go in there and start disturbing, it's going to be a huge area of disturbance, okay? This is a huge pipe like this big, and when you start, you start suctioning the muck, it's going to disturb probably twenty-five-foot area around it, okay? And where's the current of the Rainbow River going to take this nutrient-packed, toxic material that gets disturbed? It's going to take it right into Lake Russo. Okay, that's the first thing I thought, and I meant, Jeff said the same thing. He, he really doubts that Florida DEP, or even SWIFT Mud is going to allow this to happen, because you cannot catch all of that disturbed muck that's going to flow downstream. I personally have seen this process, it is a, how shall I say, it's a dirty, messy, smelly process. Okay, when you start pulling out that muck with that giant hose, what's going to be released? Methane gas, hydrogen sulfide, that, okay, you know, the hydrogen sulfide is this. Take, um, take about a basket of eggs, put it out in the Florida sun for about thirty days, then start jumping up and down on it, what are you going to smell? It's going to smell pretty bad, and that's what you're going to smell on that river, okay? So, and then they're going to take it to a place where it's going to, the water that, the sludge that they're pumping out, the muck, or we call it sludge, where they pump it out, it's going to have to go to a place to be treated. Where is that going to be? There's no place, there's no lot along the river for their, what they call their quote watering site. That's a pleasant way of labeling it. It's not going to be a label, a quote watering site where a process goes on and is not going to smell like hell, okay? To spare my words, again, I have been at these sites, and it gets really, really nasty, and it's not going to be done in a week, a two, or three, they're talking about twenty to twenty-five acre project, okay, and how I know this is, you agree to that, Chris? Yeah, twenty to twenty-five acres of this ongoing process, okay? So it's, it's going to affect the environment, not just of the river, but Lake Russo, and the whole neighborhoods around it, okay? And again, yeah, it's, the fact that that ten, fifteen, twenty-foot of muck is out there is horrible, but there's problems, okay? Turbidity issues, turbidity is the fact that when you start messing it up, those people, for example, that are flowing, that are going down the river and so on, besides, they're going to be smelling the awful smell. Now think that you are a fish or a turtle in the river, or a snail in the river, and this is going on, you're probably going to be poisoned, okay? So Jeff and I agree, there's a lot of environmental... So Jeff and I agree, there's a lot of environmental factors that must be concerned. It was one of the releasing toxins and how it's going to affect the wildlife, the aquatic life, and even the plant life within the river. Okay, next slide. Okay, and what about the effectiveness of the project over time? What if this project did get the rubber stamped and it went on? How long would it be before you're going to have to do a do-over? Okay, and the big question here, that second paragraph, is how, okay, you really, it's hard to get your head around the amount of nutrients that come into this river. So I went and got the data, and it's going to be on the next slide. But the question here is, how serious is the nutrient pollution of the Rainbow River that even when you're going to spend all the time and money to do this cleanup, it's just going to have to be a do-over within five to 10 years perhaps? Okay, so where did the data come from? Data is from the June 2018, that's four years ago, Rainbow River Basin Action Plan. You can go online and read it. Best information is page 48, 49, that actually defines quantitatively the staggering amount of just nitrogen that pollutes our Rainbow River. Next slide, please. And this is where the problem is. Okay, how is this amount of nitrogen that goes into our river every day quantified? The label is TMDL. TMDL is a calculation of the total maximum load of nitrate that any body of water, such as the Rainbow River, can receive daily and still meet what Department of Environmental Protection calls acceptable water quality standards. Okay, Bill, you ready for this? The nitrogen load determined in 2018. Okay, they pulled water samples, not from the lower part of the river, but from the spring vents itself because that's where the water comes from. So they didn't even count surface runoff water. The upper Rainbow River, along the vents, was daily samples, and then they averaged them, was 2,198,000 pounds per year of nitrogen. It's like a mountain of nitrogen that comes into our river. And how does that happen? Ag pollution, septic tanks, and so on. And the fact that our drainage basin, what we call 77 square miles, does not account for only a fraction of the amount of nitrogen that comes in on what's called the Floridian aquifer, which is that deep aquifer that surfaces and comes up into the Rainbow River as our spring vents. So this is a huge, huge amount of nutrients that our poor river has been subjected to. So the TMDL target amount for a healthy Rainbow River environment is, in terms of DEP, to be 415,000 pounds per year nitrogen load. The reduction that would be required to have our river be a healthy river is 1,784,000 pounds of nitrogen per year reduction. It's like Mission Impossible at this state at times, and we have nothing to blame but people. And the fact that our state has become extremely populated, septic tanks everywhere, right here in Marion County, four septic tanks per acre, no problem, and they're going to pump it up to eight. And also the amount of nitrogen that goes on our agricultural fields is totally unregulated, and it's totally unnecessary. In other states, you are, if you are a farmer and you are given in your best management practices, there's somebody policing. Florida polices nothing in the way of how much nitrogen is loaded into our crop fields. There's no policing. They give you a booklet, and you sign some papers, and then the farmers will report. So what can the Rainbow, what can we, the guardians of the Rainbow River, possibly do? Number one, okay, there's a letter that has been sent. And it's out front there. It was sent by 59 environmental organizations, including, signed by Lou Burnino, representing Rainbow River, asking Governor DeSantis two years ago to veto the proposed Clean Waterways Act in Florida because it was deemed by environmental groups as totally ineffective. Okay, so number two, what do we got to do? We've got to elect representatives, we're going to work to legitimize genuine effective best management practice guidelines for fertilizer and enforce the guidelines, never that we work in North Florida. And three, start limiting septic tanks, build more water treatment plants, get more funding from DEP.
Ms. Covich, we still have department heads in line today, so you've got to wrap this up.
So the only other thing I'd like to do, you put the one letter up from, so.
This is the one from Tangley Hall?
Yes. Okay, so for C and Shoreline to say that they need 120,000 to begin a survey. There's a survey being done right now, okay, by the Florida Springs Institute, headed by Dr. Robert Knight. And that, I have the letter outside on the table also. There's an ongoing survey right now, start in December. They're going to end this survey in January, and it's going to give assessments. They're going to re-quantify, give up-to-date statistics on the amount of nitrate and pollution, which is important because if you don't have up-to-date statistics, you can't ask DEP for assistance. They demand up-to-date information. So that study is going to be ended in January. By April, we'll have it put together. There's your survey. That could be used for any kind of project to improve the river.
And Miss Covich, you have to summarize.
I'm going to end it right now. There's literature out on the table.
And it was that letter she's referring to was emailed to all the council members as well.
So I'm just saying, time is not now to start asking for money. There's an ongoing survey that's going to be completed and wrapped up by next April. And that, there are definitely problems because this is not a tidal river. Again, the prospects of getting your permits is going to be slim.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just want to repeat that Mr. Jones isn't asking for the city to finance the entire project, nor is he asking for the city to finance the entire study. He just simply has said, this is my idea, this is the plan. Are you willing to contribute whatever to the study? These questions that you pointed out, Ms. Covich, are probably valid. And if they are valid, he's applying for something that's multimillion dollars in grants. And if what you have said is absolutely slam dunk right on, I would be amazed that he would be successful in getting multimillions of dollars in grants. It would seem that what you've said would be pretty apparent before someone cuts a $10 million check, I would think. I just want to clarify what Mr. Jones is asking for. Whatever, 500, 1,000, whatever. He needs 139,000, I think, for his study to put this in motion. And he's going to go around talking to individuals or whatever and try to gather the money. So just want to clarify what the man is really asking for. And his success or lack of success will not really have anything to do with the city at that point other than the money we would contribute if we contribute at all. Is that correct, Art?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. All right. Go to council liaison reports and comments. We'll start off with you, Ms. Kenny. You have any comments?
No comments.
Okay, this, Williams?
No.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Don't come in.
Okay, just a couple things. I did sign the church contract this afternoon, right, Mandy?
Yes.
And so what does that mean? It's done. It's sold.
Well, we did it. Well, we don't turn out the keys until we get the money tomorrow, right?
The actual closing will take place tomorrow. And then Andrew's made sure that he's reviewed everything, that they are aware of how that process works, withholding the deed and trust until they actually receive the money. So everything's in good order.
Okay. Little clarification, Mandy, you were asked to reach out to Jim Coolard and get a response that the council has said in next year's budget, we will come up with $175,000 as an additional contribution to the restaurant. And see what he says, what his reaction to that.
To get them to start moving on the project.
Correct.
We're only talking a couple thousand, but I thought it was 173.
It is.
Okay. I round off to nearest zero. And you drive me crazy.
That is part of my job description.
It's driving me crazy. If your salary was based on your success, you're underpaid.
I'll stick in that.
Or about your back.
Okay, I want to point out to council, we might have a little bit of an issue with Blue Run Park. I did notice yesterday, I was, I go through the park often just to see how the ordinance is going. I did witness four people exit a shuttle bus and then go to their car. And I approached the people, and I identified it was four people in their 20s, two couples. I identified myself as the mayor, and I asked them some questions. So apparently what they did is they actually parked their car at Blue Run Park, jumped on the shuttle, had the shuttle take them to Blue Run Park. They rented their equipment. They did whatever they wanted to do in that area, took the equipment back to Blue Run, to KP Hole. KP Hole. And then jumped on the shuttle and came back. So they got a round trip. And that's outside of what our agreements, I don't know. I had my wife today call and ask if shuttling was available from Blue Run Park. And the person on the phone says absolutely not. So I don't know if this was a one-shot deal or what was going on, but I found it alarming that someone would park their car at Blue Run Park, jump on the shuttle there, and then start their journey from that point. And that's all that, if that gets out, if that's allowed to happen, if that gets out, our parking lot will be just an extension of the KP Hole parking lot. And think about it, if you were going to do it, wouldn't that be the preferred way? Park your car. You jump on the shuttle, you do the trip, get out, and rather than have to get on a shuttle, you jump in your.
Unless they parked one car KP Hole, if they were thinking one car's parked KP Hole.
But this wasn't that. This was, clearly they told me that they were told they could jump on at Blue Run. So Andrew, you're going to kind of brush up a little bit what our agreement really is and what it does and doesn't do, right?
I could, I could give you some information on that now, or I can, I could address that during your comments.
On your comments? Okay, very good. I'm going to postpone, Mandy. I really need some time to go over our visit to the boat ramps in Crystal River. Mandy and I went out there Saturday and visited two of the ramps. Have a report that I really need to give you on my opinion of whether it'd work or not for us. It'll probably take a little while. So, Mandy, Vice Mayor has made me promise I wouldn't add anything on the next, add that on.
Oh, I'm going to beat him?
We have to. We have to.
But it's going to be a quick presentation. It'll be a quick presentation.
Oh, I promise.
Thank you.
Just like I promised, I would not add anything to the next.
You know, we used to kick mayors in the other days.
And that's basically it, everything I need to say. Okay.
So you want me to have discussion of the vote launch fees to the special meeting on 23rd?
Correct.
And we're starting at 5:00 P.M.?
5:00 P.M.
Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry.
All right, we're done with council liaison reports and comments. Department head reports. Mandy, I'm just going to turn that over to you to go over in the order you wish to go over it.
Okay, I have just a couple of things to update you on. We talked about Loretta Shaper's idea about perhaps doing some sort of artwork, like a mural on the gable up front of City Hall. And I did finally get in touch with Erin Swanson, who is a local mural artist. And she's coming to meet with me here at 11:30 tomorrow to sort of get an idea of what we're talking about, make some suggestions and that sort of thing. Wednesday at 10 o'clock, we are taking the executive director of Bike Florida, her name is Lisa Lake, on a tour of the Blue Run Park Trail. And the city, Cory Locke from the TDC had reached out to us and said that they are interested in coming back to the Nellin. Because we talked about this a few years ago before COVID. They were planning a trip here, and then COVID hit, so all that got canceled. So they're kind of wanting to revisit that, so they're coming on Wednesday. And, Boy, will you be on this one?
I'm going to be on that one.
Okay. Make sure you're going to line up the golf cart and everything again. The Women's Club 100th Anniversary is on May 22nd, from Tuesday. And we received an invitation from them, anyone on council who would like to come, anyone on staff who would like to come. There's going to be an ice cream social, and the mayor is going to present the proclamation that you all passed last month. And I'm going to be buried the rest of this week with budget, or Jan's going to strangle me because I didn't get her council's budget or the clerk's budget today. So I have to really work hard to get that to her before the end of the week.
So nobody call Mandy.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mandy, next.
Anybody want to talk about the downstairs?
No.
No, I don't have it.
Troy.
Two quick things, council. We did the beach cleanup last week. Over, we had 15 volunteers and five city employees. And if I had to guess, I'd say we moved about 4,000, 5,000 pounds of unwanted vegetation from the beach that day.
Awesome, thank you.
So great effort on the volunteers and the community, and one rake at a time, being out there. The second thing is, this is a top priority for the mayor. He's going to be excited, so hold on to your seats. We have battery backup at all four traffic lights in Scotty. That was completed May 5th. I received notification of it. We should have four hours of battery backup, and we'll be monitoring it during any power outages. If there's any glitches or problems, we still have the generators as a backup.
That will be on all of our stoplights in the city?
All four.
All four.
Yep, yep. And the one last thing is the road evaluation grant project that we've been working on. I will be meeting with the project supervisor through the engineering firm on Friday and going out in the field reviewing the roads that they have, that the evaluation's on. We should have report ready for council probably by June, July. Just in time for budget. That's it. That's all I got for tonight.
Thank you for working on Friday.
Thank you, Troy. Excellent.
Regina?
Yes. Well, I'm going to start by saying that I went to the Growth and Development Projects Meeting with the county today, and they had several things that I thought were really interesting. We are among the many things that they mentioned through this meeting. They wanted to make sure that they're, that they're. They wanted to make sure that they're, that they create a planning tool that's going to help development in the county. So it's going to be really exciting to see that. They're going to set up several working groups, working sessions to come up with ideas. They have a lot of things on the table that they were talking about today. They said that we are the county number four safest place to live. We are number six fastest growing. And they said that about 900 families are coming yearly to the state and about in the hundreds are coming just to Marion County. So it's, it's a lot. They feel industrial development keeps the mileage rate low. So keep it in the back of your mind when I start bringing in industrial development. Healthcare industry, HCA Florida. They said that they brought about $365 million in the last year. So that's another thing that I think is very important for Danellen because we don't have any hospitals here. So bringing healthcare to Danellen would be great. So just keep that in the back of your mind. They talked about housing deficit, roadway infrastructure. So it was, it was very interesting. They didn't dwell on it too much, but they're, they're going to create this work, working workshops to talk about all those specific things. And their main focus is to increase urban growth boundaries and educate the county in their vision and their vision for growth. So we need to open up our minds for that. It's coming. And with that said, my report for the department is that we had 38 new permits this past month in April. Five were commercial. There was one new home. 27 residential permits in total. And five new businesses. Fond Spot Insurance Solutions located at 20600 West Pennsylvania Avenue. It's one. Mostly Mattress is another one at 11352 North William Street. True Health and Bigger, 293 East Pennsylvania Avenue. Danellen Parking and Storage LLC. It's Mr. Kiefer's place. He's going to be having a storage facility there. It's off of Highway 40. And we insure, grant them insurance. It's located at 11223 North William Street. So those are the five facilities. New business that came into town. As far as code enforcement, this has been in the radar for a while. And as you all know, it's, our initiative in code enforcement has been motivated because of presidents coming up and saying that they want core enforcement, they want core enforcement. So we wanted to make sure that we created some type of initiative to start code enforcement. I heard Mr. Wally Dunn talk about how we have nine code enforcement notices out. We have actually a total of 26 code enforcements in the month of April. They're not violations, they're just courtesy notices. They are tackling different issues. RBs parked in the wrong place, boats parked in the wrong place, nuisance such as derelict vehicles, commercial vehicles parked in the wrong place, all those things. And we've been trying to tackle all those issues as we go along. And just a month of May, we have 17 from the start of this month. So we are, we are really working towards trying to get people to know that we are going to start doing this code enforcement more and more. We do find here and there that some areas of the code have issues that we need to address, such as having an RV parked in a residential area but not parked in an agricultural area where there's a residential home. Because of the zoning criteria in that area, that code does not apply, which was the case with Mr. Dunn, what he brought forward. So we had a very nice discussion and it was explained that in his case, it doesn't apply because it's an agricultural zoning area. And those things, we're going to have to start addressing with the code because there are issues that are contradicting within the code. And we're going to have to address them and fix them so that we can really enforce the code. Because right now, it's, you know, it's difficult because we read one thing in one place and then it contradicts another. So it makes it really hard for code enforcement to take it back the way it should be. So that's, those are the things that I'm dealing with on a daily basis. But we are working towards that initiative. We are trying to make code enforcement, you know, take priority of doing this and so that we can have a beautiful city. And we are going to continue doing it as long as council wants me to. So that's, that's pretty much for code enforcement. As far as the Dinkins property, there were, council approached, our department today, mayor approached us with some questions about three issues. One of them was the Dinkins property on 41. Basically, all I can report on that is that they are moving forward with trying to demolish the property. So they came in front of the historic board and the historic board had some questions for them. And so they've been trying to put that together for the historic board. It isn't the agenda for this coming board, but the Dinkins property manager advised me that he's not going to be able to come in this coming board meeting. So we're going to have to take it, take it off the agenda at that point. When, you know, at the meeting, I'll advise the chair and the members that it's going to be in June instead because they're not ready to present yet. But their intention is to demolish the site, the building structure that is there now because according to them, it's not, it's not feasible to maintain or to fix. And they want to develop a brand-new building in there. So that's, that's coming up. As far as the solar farm update that you requested, I really don't have information on that. All I know is that it was supposed to be finished by year 25, but they really haven't started anything, as far as I know. I haven't seen any permitting come my way about that, so I really don't have information on it. And as far as the RV Park presentation that you all saw, it was so great. I did request Mr. Chris, I can't remember his name.
Shirley.
Shirley. I requested him to provide me an update. We have not seen anything yet. He, he was going to send me an email and at 5:00, at 5:00 o'clock when I looked, he still hadn't sent me anything. So I'm, I'm waiting on that. As soon as he gives me an update, I will, I will share it with you all. But as of today, I don't have any updates. I don't have any information about that. And I think that concludes my, oh, and one more thing, I'm sorry. The planning board meeting for last month was canceled because there was, there was nothing to discuss other than the vision statement, which we are going to be working on it. It was a decision made by Chair, Ms. D'Arbille, after our communication. And it was decided that we weren't going to have, there was no reason to have it. So it's been postponed to this coming month meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Lot of information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
Always.
Who's, who's next?
I'm down unless Chief wants something, got something to say?
Thank you, council. For potential step forward.
Okay. Mr. Hand, right? Hey, Andrew.
Yes, sir. Just two things to bring up, both a product of the meeting. The first one, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Pepper personally yet, but I did want to confirm with Virginia, actually, during, previous to the reports. And I thought I had heard that he was a board member. And in fact, I understand he is the historic chair. Given that circumstance, that could bring into play 112313 as far as ethics, doing business with one's agency, as well as conflict of interest. Now typically, when it comes to doing business, that requires an exchange of considerations and sort of, you know, not a donation. However, there are some opinions I just pulled up going back to 1982 and so forth that could implicate other elements. So in the interest of making sure that Mr. Kiefer is protected as well as the city, I would just recommend some direction to staff to contact commission on ethics and make sure there aren't issues there. If there are no issues, then there's no problem. So proceed as the motion is directed. If there is a problem, that's still fine. If council directs just staff to handle on a staff level, unfortunately, that might eliminate some of the benefit of the city. But it serves the city from an absolute problem and you still have a contract.
I mean, technically, it doesn't matter if somebody gets paid a commission amount that costs the city more money.
Exactly.
So, so yes, I would like to direct you to make sure it's good. And that's why I was asking earlier, make sure about donations and stuff. So that'd be great.
Question I would have, without having, putting it in a legal reform, would be just a good faith understanding that Mr. Kiefer donates for instance?
No, it has to be in writing due to the contract for instance. I mean, for...
For instance, we all get a very small stipend for being council members. In case you guys wonder what we pay, we get $150.
One journey, you get two after day.
I'm down to $4.41 a day. If we want to go, we can donate that money back to the city.
There's not an issue with donation. The issue is the actual services and contractual relationship.
So my question would be, without having anything contractual, what is preventing Mr. Kiefer from just making a donation back to the city? Does he...
Here, there's still something that's performed, whether or not it's contractual and there are, are going to have to be, because of the nature of the relationship, there would have to be a contract. But even in the absence of a contract, there's some sort of exchange. Again, we're not talking about consideration. But these statutes could very well be implicated because of the relationship to do with that. Now, it's something that's easy to vet. And so it's something that we can certainly look at. Fastest way is to ask.
Just to give you another example, while I was sitting on council, I donated $500 to the city to help fix the pump. It didn't seem to be a problem with my donation.
No. In that case, that's, that's a little bit different of a circumstance.
Okay, all right. But I want, we don't want angry, intro question.
No, 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 no.
Okay, just asking some questions.
Mayor?
Oh, good God, you scared the chiefies out of you, Mr. Fisher.
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
Oh.
Scared me.
I can just put it in the contract as a duration that the amount be credited towards the purchase price of the property. That way, there's no issue with donation. I'll just put the commission amount, whatever, $2,500, be credited towards the purchase price of the property.
I don't think it's the fact that you're donating anything, it's the fact that you're on a board that if you work for the city doing a contract, that that's where the issue is. It has nothing to do with the donation or the commission. I understand that's...
That's right. So for instance, you know, one of the ones I pulled up is an older one. There was an issue, some issues. The school board member who listed property for sale by the school board without proceeding commission. Now, there's a few different ways we go with this. It's right out of the blue, so I don't have time to go do the full analysis here. It's different because you have two different awards. And city council is the one who's making the contract, not the historic board. So there are some competing factors. Just want to make sure that there is not an issue.
Because the worst-case scenario is that we just sent you over a contract, or a contract fell off.
Use the floor bar, they can plan contract.
I mean, I can email it to you.
I also have a committee report. Is there a time in our meeting for this? I didn't see a spot for it. I didn't see it.
What do you have?
A committee report from the historical.
If that's to come to a meeting and do a committee report. If you want to sit here for four hours, go for it.
What am I supposed to do?
We're not going to deny it, but please, five minutes.
What is it supposed to be?
That is actually on the workshop agenda, Scott.
On the workshop?
Yeah, we have board reports on every workshop agenda where usually Ms. D'Arbille gives a report and we would love for you to come to the workshop and give a report during that time.
Can you do it in five minutes?
I can do it in one minute.
The farm relocated at 20731 Powell Road, Illusions of You. We approved a application for a certificate of appropriateness to change the colors, so they're going to be painting their building. We approved an application for a certificate of appropriateness at 11884 North William Street, which is the Plaza for Danellen Cleaners and the tattoo shop is. New ownership there. They're going to be painting it, giving it a facelift, putting a fence on it. They applied for a very large sign in reference to the sign that's next door at the Danellen building. They weren't present. We approved the sign, but it met the code requirements for the city. So if they want something additional than that, they either come back in front of us or in front of you. 20702 West Pennsylvania, it used to be an antique shop, a builder, developer, real estate company, I believe, has moved in there now. Yes. And they're doing a beautiful job with that building. They came forward with a new sign. We approved it. We felt a bit within the criteria and it's quite a bit smaller than the previous sign. So everything else they've done, it's been approved up to this point. They came forward for the sign. We approved a grant at 2, I'm sorry, we had a grant come in at 20943 Second Avenue. It was for $5,000 to replace windows all the way around the house. They were not present. We declined it and asked them to come forward so we could look at what was going to do for the community. And we approved a grant for $5,000 for the Women's Club at 11766 Cedar Street for cleaning up planting, trimming some trees up, and we do some painting on there as well. That's all I have from historic debate.
Thank you for your time, Karen.
Council, I think that wraps it up. Do we have a...
Oh, wait.
Just have one more thing if you want me to address the contract with you.
Sure.
I took a look at that earlier today and I've reviewed it several times, of course, during the course of creating the ordinance. But we're looking at interlocal 2007-14. What I would say to that, as far as shuttling goes, shuttling is not actually mentioned in the agreement. But this is the agreement that allows the county the ability to conduct commercial operations on the facility of the park. It's been brought, I think, to council's attention several times in the past. And this is, this is a contract that is self-renewing and requires both the parties to agree to terminate it or terminate it. So it's a contract that unless there's an action to change it, it continues renewing and go on. And there are some provisions in here that are an issue for the city as far as providing the county powers to operate the park and so forth. For the management plan, that should be the city's, within the city's gambit. But in addition, there are no restrictions as to what the county does as far as their operations. So I think one of the things for councils to consider in this agreement is something that I don't know how amenable the county would be to operating it because it grants them a great deal of leeway. But one of the things I think that council could look at is narrowing some of the terms with this agreement to an amendment or perhaps a new agreement. It would just take, of course, consultation with the county to accomplish that. Other than that, that's, that's all I have. But if you have any questions or would like me to report more depth, you know, add a workshop or something.
All right, thank you. I think that's, so we're going to put down the workshop, right?
You want that on the workshop?
Yeah, discuss.
Oh, I didn't mean for this, I'm going to have a...
No, the next one.
The engine.
Yeah. Okay.
I make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Fisher.
He's out.
Thank you, everybody, stay tonight.
One second.